At this time, I would call to order this work session of the Moore County Board of Education. It's Monday, August 3rd, 2020, and the time is 3:00 PM. I might make note that we are meeting in the beautiful new facility at Aberdeen Elementary School on Highway 5. We have, we are meeting in the school gymnasium auditorium. Wow. And we have Mr. Kent Eklund and his staff, along with Ms. Murphy and staff, who have enabled us to set up here in the new elementary school. It is a beautiful facility, and we thank Principal Dante Poole and staff for hosting us here for this first time back to an in-person meeting. It is a pleasure to be back where we might see one another and make the most of the opportunity to learn from eye contact and people who have learned to smile with their eyes over the past few months. So we are delighted to be here. At this point, I'll ask for a motion to approve the agenda.
So move.
Motion by Mr. Dennison.
Second.
Second by Ms. Thompson. All those in favor, and I guess today we can vote en masse. All right, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Seeing none, the motion carries 7-0. Please join me now and stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'll now ask Vice Chair Thompson to lead us in a moment of silence.
Thank you, Chair Carter. I would just like to recognize that over the past couple of weeks that we lost another student in the Moore County School System family. So I would ask that you keep the family in your thoughts. May we have a moment of silence, please? Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Thompson.
All right, Dr. Grimacy, we are ready to move to action and discussion items.
Madam Chairman, thank you very much. I would encourage board members that when you speak, go ahead and get too close to the mic, and then if it's too loud or too problematic, Mr. Eklund or Ms. May will wave us off of it and we'll make that adjustment. At this time, another new twist is that we have our Executive Officer for Finance and Budget, who is going to report in remotely. And so, Mr. Andrew Cox, do we have him available to present the amended budget resolution for the fourth quarter? Mr. Eklund? Okay. So at this time, Mr. Cox, are you ready? Is he muted? You may be muted, Andrew. I see his face, we just don't hear the voice there. Let's see. Okay, tell you what, I'm going to recommend to the Chair that we move to Item B, and whatever little technical snafu we're having with Mr. Cox there, we'll get that resolved and come back to it. So at this time, Mr. Barath, if you would approach the podium. Just about the time we were getting really good at the all-virtual approach, now we've we're adapting to a new one. Madam Chair, with your permission, we'll go to Item 2B, and we'll come back to 2A as soon as somebody gives me the high sign that Mr. Cox is available. All right, is that Mr. Cox dialing in from deep space? Hang on, Mr. Barath, if you could give us just a second here. Mr. Eklund, is that something you guys can work on while we proceed? If we could, thank you. Okay, Mr. Barath, if you'd approach the mic and present Item 2B, please.
Thank you, Dr. Grimacy.
A little closer, John.
Yep. That's as high as that turns, so I might be a little tall for that. Good evening, afternoon. Welcome to the Aberdeen Elementary School. It is a pleasure to be here. It was many years, years, and years in the making, so I'm glad to have this opportunity to present to you from the school. This topic is related to the school. This is the disposal of the old Aberdeen Elementary School. And it's gone by that name old for many years, but today we really mean it. This is the new school that is the old elementary. As the board will recall, back in December and in February, you declared all four schools, Southern Pines Elementary Primary and Aberdeen Elementary Primary as surplus. And in their resolution, it was the approval to dispose of this current old Aberdeen school. The same motion and resolution by the board in January also authorized us to engage with Lean Associates as a real estate representing agent for the disposal of the schools. Following the February 4th Board Commissioner meeting, where the properties were offered for fair market value to the commissioners, and they voted not to acquire them, we engaged with the agents to begin marketing the properties. The closing date for this school for working with a potential purchaser was July 31st, just last week. Upon a review of the offers that were worked on by the Realtor and reviewed by staff, it was determined that the best for the school system offer was by Pathfinder Investment Management LLC, of their offer of $1.5 million to purchase the property. The sheet does have a breakdown of how that process would work. They will pay the statutory requirement 5% deposit with their offer. That is $75,000, and then that will allow the upset process to begin. Should this company prevail in the process, they will then deposit another $40,000 to Moore County Schools to conduct a 60-day inspection period of the property and their plan to improve. At the conclusion of this period, this, should they decide that the property is able to continue with their desired use and needs, the $115,000 deposited will become non-refundable. This will require a process engaging with the town of Aberdeen for planning and zoning approval of their development of the site. So to conduct that process, they are given 180 days from the date of the conclusion of the upset process, upon which to receive approval of a reasonable version of the proposed development plan by Aberdeen Town Council. If this is accepted by the board, we will begin the upset process. You will make that decision at your business meeting next week. I have outlined in here also the process, for clarity, on the upset bid process, the step-by-step actions that must be taken. Where the bid will be issued and posted, that individuals or entities will be able to make counteroffers. They must meet the required upset amount, and in this case of a $1.5 million offer, that would be $1,575,050 at the minimum. At the conclusion of a 10-day process, when there are no more upsets, the results of that will be brought back to the board for a final decision to close on the property with the successful bidder. At this time, I am here to respond to any questions that you may have on this matter.
All right, are there questions for Mr. Barath concerning the offer for the purchase of Aberdeen Elementary School, as in the old Aberdeen Elementary School on Highway 1 in Aberdeen? Are there questions?
Mr. Barath, refresh my memory, what was the appraisal?
The appraisal value was just over $1.3 million.
Thank you.
Mr. Barath, the 180 days, does that begin after the final upset bid is received?
Upon approval by the board of the process, yes.
Excuse me, Mr. Barath, if you could just clarify that. The board is going to vote and make, we're going to be requesting the board to make approval today. What you intended to say was 180 days after we come back with the conclusion of the upset bid approach. It's 180 days from that point.
That's correct.
Not 180 days from next Monday, but 180 days after we bring back the final outcome of the upset bid approach. Is that correct?
That is correct.
All right, Madam, Ms. Wallenmiller, I'm kind of used to calling you Madam Chair there. Does that answer your question?
It does, thank you.
And my question is, is just to clarify, the 10 days starts after we vote on Board Meeting Night, is that correct?
The 10 days will begin shortly following that, whether it's the next day or two days later, depends on the ability to get the posting set into public documentations through the newspapers. So the submission deadlines to meet those would trigger what it'd be, whether it's going to be Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday, or Friday, we'll be able to advise the board of that then.
Okay.
And John clarifies, that calendar days or working days?
This is calendar days.
Okay. Yeah, are there other questions?
Madam Chair, the superintendent does intend to recommend that the board consider a motion to approve Pathfinder Investment Management, their bid of $1,500,000 for the acquisition of the Aberdeen Elementary School, and to direct staff to proceed with posting the offer for upset bids. That is the only recommendation before the board. This is certainly, this would be the beginning of the process, not the end of the process. And so, I'll be prepared to offer that recommendation at your meeting next week, and we'll look forward to the board's direction as to how you want that placed on the agenda.
And then, Mr. Barath, the upset bid process, as it goes on, would be handled by Lean Associates in conjunction with your office?
That's correct. They continue to remain an integral part of this process right up until the closing.
Any further questions? All right, seeing none, then we'll accept this good news at face value as it is and move on.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you.
Mr. Eklund, where do we stand? Is Mr. Cox ready? Okay, so, Madam Chair, with your permission, Item 2A. Mr. Eklund, you and Mr. Cox take it away. Mr. Cox?
I'm going to give him, I'm going to give him a minute to work his little stuff.
Testing, testing.
Okay, we have Mr. Cox. You need to back off the rest of the mics, Kent. Go ahead, Andrew.
Testing.
I heard you there.
Yep. I'm here, can everybody hear?
Yes, we can hear you, go ahead.
And can you see the budget resolution on the screen?
Yes, we can.
Perfect. Okay, so what you're seeing there is the amended budget resolution for the fourth quarter. The things that I would like to highlight, in state revenues, we increased to $84,67,517, which was an increase of $1.195 million. The things that I want to note are, the majority of that comes from coronavirus relief funding, which is student computers, school nutrition, personnel computers, and student connectivity. That makes up the majority of that $1.195 million. Any remaining, or any unspent coronavirus relief funding will carry over into the fifth year '21 original budget resolution that we presented, I believe, next month. Local current fund, there is no net change for the dollar amount there, but one thing I want to highlight is, we had to transfer $176,000 from instructional support to charter schools to cover the charter school funding that we had provided based on general statute to those charter students. You may recall, in an update that I gave to the board, I believe, last fall or during the winter, I was projecting that we were going to overbudget for that $2 million. We had to wait until the end of the year to figure out where we may be to make some adjustments to cover those additional expenditures, and this budget resolution is now covering those expenditures. Onto federal programs, it was an increase of $2 million. The majority of that is the $2 million increase in PRC 163, which was the CARES Act direct funding coming to us through DPI. The next item is local capital fund. You see there, we increased by $1,074,000 to $2,163,944. The two large items there are $631,000 for replacement of school buses, which does come from the state, although we do have to book it in local capital outlay per statutory requirement. And then there's an increase of $423,000 in maintenance. That's attributed to waiting for bond money, where we had expenditure that we cannot request from the county until after all the bonds were awarded. So we had to appropriate $782,000 in appropriated capital fund balance. $339,000 was already received from the county in prior years that was left to carry over. The remaining portion covered the monies that we had to spend prior to the bonding issued. We have since now requested reimbursed from the county and received that money, so that money will go back into capital fund balance, kind of as a wash, but in order for us to be in compliance with the budget resolution ordinance as of June 30, we had to appropriate capital fund balance. But we're not using that capital fund balance, we've been reimbursed by the county for that. The next item we see is the school nutrition fund, Fund 5, no change. Then local operations fund, which is Fund 8, there was an increase of $375,000. Couple things to note there, we had to appropriate, or we did appropriate $147,000 of fund balance attributed to technology. This was monies that was collected from tech fees, the technology department had pointed on appropriating and new things, so it wasn't unknown where they were overspent, we had to use the money to cover those expenditures, it was land expenditures from technology. So overall budget, $136,73,949, which was an increase of $4,654,181. After the, any questions?
Are there questions for Mr. Cox?
Mr. Cox, this is Helena. Just to clarify that the CARES Act funding that is federal, in the federal program fund bucket, any funds that are not spent in this past fiscal year will carry over until the end of that period of funding, which is, I believe, October of 2021, is that right?
Can Kent relay that question, or you repeat, I didn't quite understand it?
Ms. Wallenmiller, go ahead and repeat the question, just get your voice a little closer to the microphone.
The CARES Act funding under the federal program fund, the $2 million that is in there, whatever is not spent in this coming school year will then carry over, is that correct?
Yeah, so that, our $2,632,000, which we anticipate was spending $1.8 million after sharing with private, private schools that I mentioned previously, and I'll cover that again also in the budget update. But yes, anything that's not spent in fiscal year '21 will carry over to September 30th and fifth year '22. All the other coronavirus relief funding hired on December 30th, we need one.
So we'll see that in the next original budget for next year at our next meeting?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Yes.
Other questions? All right, seeing none, thank you very much, Mr. Cox, for keeping us informed, and we appreciate you finally weathering the electronic issues and joining us. Dr. Grimacy, I believe we can move on.
Yeah, Madam Chairman, the next presentation is mine, and just for the sake of our presentation for video streaming, I'm going to move over to the podium so that I'm observed a little bit differently than the board. Okay. Can you hear me? All right, Madam Chair, members of the board, by resolution adopted on December 9th of 2019 and revised on February 10th of 2020, the school board declared four school sites as surplus and determined the procedures that would be used to dispose of them. Specifically, the board authorized the sale of the Southern Pines primary site to the Southern Pines Land and Housing Trust upon satisfaction of three specified conditions by June 1, 2020. And this was done on the understanding that the site would be sold by competitive upset bids if the trust was unwilling or unable to satisfy those conditions. The board further authorized the sale of three other surplus school sites, including Southern Pines Elementary School, by the upset bid process. And it's important to note that while state law generally requires surplus school properties to be sold by an open and competitive bid process, the trust based its request on a statute that authorized certain sales of properties to nonprofit corporations or trusts for the purposes of preserving a site's significant architectural, archaeological, artistic, cultural, or historical associations. The board subsequently extended the deadline for the trust to meet the three conditions for a private sale until August 1, 2020. Separately, Moore Montessori Community School, I'll call them Moore Montessori, asked the board to engage in private negotiations for the purchase of Southern Pines Elementary, or in the alternative, to enter a long, into a long-term lease of the site with no rental payments. This request was made pursuant to separate statutes, not the same ones cited by the trust, that authorized local school boards to rent property to charter schools and that authorized certain non-competitive sales of surplus property from one governmental unit to another. Based on the information presented with the original request, the board respectfully declined Moore Montessori's offer. Moore Montessori later clarified that it was willing to pay the $1,080,000 appraised value to purchase the site, and the board determined, based on this clarification, that it was willing to give further consideration to a possible amendment to its prior resolution to authorize a private sale to Moore Montessori for payment of $1,080,000, with or without the other conditions that the board may choose to impose. To date, however, the board has not authorized a private sale of Southern Pines Elementary to Moore Montessori, or any amendment to the conditions it previously set on the private sale of, of the school, of Southern Pines Primary to the trust. Most recently, the trust has formally stated in correspondence received on July 17th that it is not willing to pay the $630,000 in appraised value for Southern Pines Primary. Instead, the trust has submitted a counteroffer for a $200,000 cash payment, and has submitted written arguments and supporting documents in support of that offer, including an alternative real estate appraisal the trust commissioned after expressing interest in acquiring the site. At about the same time, the trust asked for revisions to the indemnification agreement the school board attorney sent to its representatives in late February. Finally, the trust requested a further extension of the original June 1 deadline to October 1, 2020, in part to give it more time to continue raising pledges for site acquisition costs. Having given both of these matters careful consideration and considered with the school board attorney, the superintendent recommends that the board defer final decisions on both offers, the trust's and Moore Montessori's, until the board's December work session and board meeting, or as soon as possible thereafter, as may be practical. In support of this recommendation, I submit the following. It's truly impossible to overstate the extent to which staff members are currently consumed with the urgent and nonstop study and planning on a wide range of public health and safety issues related to the coronavirus pandemic.
Thank you very much, Mr. Cox, for keeping us informed and we appreciate you finally weathering the electronic issues and, and joining us. Dr. Grimacy, I believe we can move on.
Yeah, Madam Chairman, the next presentation is mine. And just for the sake of our presentation for video streaming, I'm going to move over to the podium so that I'm observed a little bit differently than the board. Okay. Can you hear me?
Wait, I can hear you.
All right. Madam Chair, members of the board, by resolution adopted on December 9th of 2019 and revised on February 10th of 2020, the school board declared four school sites as surplus and determined the procedures that would be used to dispose of them. Specifically, the board authorized the sale of the Southern Pines primary site to the Southern Pines Land and Housing Trust upon satisfaction of three specified conditions by June 1, 2020. And this was done on the understanding that the site would be sold by competitive upset bids if the trust was unwilling or unable to satisfy those conditions. The board further authorized the sale of three other surplus school sites, including Southern Pines Elementary School, by the upset bid process. And it's important to note that while state law generally requires surplus school properties to be sold by an open and competitive bid process, the trust based its request on a statute that authorized certain sales of properties to nonprofit corporations or trusts for the purposes of preserving a site's significant architectural, archaeological, artistic, cultural, or historical associations. The board subsequently extended the deadline for the trust to meet the three conditions for a private sale until August 1, 2020. Separately, Moore Montessori Community School, I'll call them Moore Montessori, asked the board to engage in private negotiations for the purchase of Southern Pines Elementary or in the alternative to enter a long term, into a long-term lease of the site with no rental payments. This request was made pursuant to separate statutes, not the same ones cited by the trust, that authorized local school boards to rent property to charter schools and that, and that authorized certain non-competitive sales of surplus property from one governmental unit to another. Based on the information presented with the original request, the board respectfully declined Moore Montessori's offer. Moore Montessori later clarified that it was willing to pay the $1,080,000 appraised value to purchase the site. And the board determined, based on this clarification, that it was willing to give further consideration to a possible amendment to its prior resolution to authorize a private sale to Moore Montessori for payment of $1,080,000 with or without the other conditions that the board may choose to impose. To date, however, the board has not authorized a private sale of Southern Pines Elementary to Moore Montessori or any amendment to the conditions it previously set on the private sale of, of the school, of Southern Pines Primary to the trust. Most recently, the trust has formally stated in correspondence received on July 17th that it is not willing to pay the $630,000 in appraised value for Southern Pines Primary. Instead, the trust has submitted a counter offer for a $200,000 cash payment and has submitted written arguments and supporting documents in support of that offer, including an alternative real estate appraisal the trust commissioned after expressing interest in acquiring the site. At about the same time, the trust asked for revisions to the indemnification agreement the school board attorney sent to its representatives in late February. Finally, the trust requested a further extension of the original June 1 deadline to October 1, 2020, in part to give it more time to continue raising pledges for site acquisition costs. Having given both of these matters careful consideration and considered with the school board attorney, the superintendent recommends that the board defer final decisions on both offers, the trust's and Moore Montessori's, until the board's December work session and board meeting or as soon as possible thereafter, as may be practical. In support of this recommendation, I submit the following. It's truly impossible to overstate the extent to which staff members are currently consumed with the urgent and nonstop study and planning on a wide range of public health and safety issues related to the coronavirus pandemic and a pending reopening of our schools. The management of this unprecedented crisis continues to impose extraordinary strains on our staff time and the many complex and urgent issues it continues to present must take priority over property disposal issues for the time being. In addition to managing the district-wide reopening of schools and a multifaceted and ever-adapting response to a major public health crisis, the administration must also devote substantial attention over the next five months to planning for the openings of the new Aberdeen Elementary, the new Northmore High School addition, and the new Southern Pines Elementary School, as well as to the execution of the upset bid processes for the old Aberdeen Elementary and Aberdeen Primary sites. A delay in any final decisions regarding the disposition of Southern Pines Primary and, and Southern Pines Elementary until at least the December work session and board meeting will help ensure that the administration and legal counsel have sufficient time to study the many legal, economic, and practical implications of the trust's and Moore Montessori's requests and to develop appropriate guidance and recommendations for the board while preserving the administration's ability over the next few months to commit sufficient time and attention to more immediately pressing matters. Third, any final decision related to the disposal of the Southern Pines schools remains presumptuous until all operations are consolidated at the new school in January of 2021. Fourth, the trust has specifically requested an extension, in part to give it more time to raise pledges for the proposed purchase. Fifth, given that Southern Pines Primary and the Southern Pines Elementary sites were declared surplus at the same time, and both of the subject of interest from third parties wishing to acquire title without competitive bidding, it just makes sense to make any final decisions regarding the disposition of the two sites at about the same time. Next, the earliest feasible time the upset bid process could be initiated for the Southern Pines Primary and Elementary sites would be the month of October, and it's quite possible under current circumstances that the process would not begin until November, even if there were no private sale options to evaluate and discuss. I go back to one of the reasons I gave you earlier. If we need the Southern Pines buildings through January, frankly, any upset bid process doesn't make sense until we've completely utilized the facilities that we have currently. And finally, a delay in any final decisions regarding the disposition of Southern Pines Primary and Southern Pines Elementary until at least the December work session and board meeting will not preclude ongoing and informal communications with the trust and Moore Montessori and the internal study of the many legal, economic, and practical issues raised by the trust's and Moore Montessori's requests, all of which will continue apace with a view to reaching a final resolution of both matters in December or as soon as possible thereafter. Now, Madam Chair and members of the board, barring any redirection on your part, this evening I'd like to just say that next week I am prepared to offer a recommendation that you retroactively approve an extension of the Southern Pines Land and Housing Trust's deadline for meeting the conditions set out in the board's December 19th, 2019, and February 10th, 2020 resolutions, and defer any final determinations as to the disposal of both the Southern Pines Primary and Southern Pines Elementary School sites until your December 2020 work session and board meeting or as soon as possible thereafter. I'm happy to answer any questions, but I just really appreciate your consideration that we can establish a precedent right now, a process right now that's completely open and transparent, allows time for thoughtful deliberation, but also allows a little bit of time for us to keep our priorities in order.
Okay, so are there other questions for Dr. Grimacy? I know for one, as a grandparent of children in the schools, I would like to know that all of our efforts are concentrated on the safest, smoothest reopening of our schools that can possibly be done, and that can only be done if our school staff is able to turn full attention to what is immediately necessary. And since at this point, these, this sale is not immediately necessary, the delay seems to be most appropriate. Are there other questions for Dr. Grimacy?
Dr. Grimacy?
Yes, Mr. Weaver.
By, by this delay, you wouldn't anticipate any substantial increase in maintenance or operating costs to maintain those schools if, as long as we own them?
Yeah, no, sir, because as I indicated, at least through January, we need both of these sites. So they'll be getting all the TLC we can give them for no other reason but to keep our students and staff as safe and healthy as we possibly can.
Thank you.
Other questions? All right, we will wait your recommendation.
Thank you, ma'am.
All right, at this point, we'll consider the draft of the school board meeting agenda for August 10th. Items, I lost it.
Did you lose your agenda?
I've got mine, but it disappeared from the screen. Items for pending action for consent agenda, is there a recommendation? I would assume that we can put items A and, at least item A on consent agenda. Is there need for discussion on items B or C?
B or C may need to be discussed.
All right, so then let's go with item A, 2A being on the consent agenda. Items B and C will be action items.
Can you, do you say B is going to be consent?
B and C will be action items.
I thought you said D, I'm sorry.
No, D, D will not be on the list. All right, Ms. Potter, are we clear on that? Thank you. Okay, at this point, let us move on to reports, 3A.
Thank you, Madam Chair. At this time, we'll try our hand with Mr. Cox again. So Mr. Eklund says that we're ready to go. Mr. Cox, are you available?
I am, if you can hear me.
We can hear you, and we're going to get your presentation up here. If you hold off, we'll have it available just shortly. Madam Chair, I just want to express my appreciation to anybody who's viewing the meeting today and for those that are present today. This is a whole new world of mixing live and, and video presentation, and we appreciate everybody's indulgence and my compliments to staff because although we may have our critics, I'm very proud of the work that we're doing so far with this brand-new approach. So, Mr. Eklund, we're grateful to you, Ms. May, and every, the whole technical team that's helping us today, everyone present. Mr. Cox, you ready to present your PowerPoint?
Yes, sir, I am. Can you see it?
We can see it, and you're, you're good to go.
All right. So this is an update on the Moore County Schools FY 2020, 2021 budget. This is just, some of these are things that you've already seen, just want to recap, and then there are going to be some new items that you haven't seen. Again, just in summary, the county appropriated 38, or excuse me, $31,850,000 to us, which was a decrease of $739,133. So here, again, I've got revised fixed costs. Fixed costs continue to evolve and change. The one thing here that you see that is new, that you have not seen in, on prior presentations, in talking with several folks, it appears that the charter school student count is anticipated to increase by about 100 more students than what I had projected previously. So instead of honing down to one number, Dr. Grimacy and I had a conversation, we decided to put a range in there. So you see that range of 275,000 to 475,000. So 100 more students, or roughly 100 more students would be $200,000. If it was exactly 100, it would be 217,000. So we're wrapping that at 200,275,000 to 475,000. So our new fixed cost with nothing else changing, which we're sure that something will, but right now, best information that we have is 1.155 million to 1.355 million. And then again, you've seen this slide, but it's just updated to show that charter school increase for those 90 to 100 students, additional $200,000, up to 1.355 million in fixed cost that we have. And then your highest priority need that the board was looking to implement, if at all possible, was a classified salary schedule, 850,000, and restoring teachers in grades four and five, additional 560. So the bottom line there, again, is the fixed cost increased up to 1.355 million. We've discussed the consolidation cost is the remaining cost left over to operate the Southern Pines schools until they open in, the new Southern Pines opens in January at $320,000, which again was that 739,000 increase where we had requested that the county allowed us to keep a portion of that since Southern Pines schools were not opening, which we didn't receive. So budget shortfall, what we're looking at is 1.475 to 1.675 million dollars. And again, we've talked about possible alternative for one-time revenue sources. As I mentioned in the budget resolution and alluding to Ms. Wall Miller's question, we've got this PRC 163, which is CARES Act direct of 1.8 million after we share our monies with the private schools that we're glad to share. Remaining items here are House Bill 1043 items, which you've seen most of them. You've seen the summer learning program of 493,000. The next item you have not seen, because we didn't have guidance on it, it's contracted and don't help, at 82,000, and Kim Bullard and Lucinda Dedman are working on, plan to spend that. The next item, we didn't have guidance on until last week, the non-digital remote instructional resources, which is $24,887,000. The intent of that is, according to DPI, is some districts may have increased cost accounts or things like that, that we will be able to use that money for, non-digital related. We've seen the digital device for student money, seen the school nutrition money, you've seen the different devices for staff, Wi-Fi buses, the application process that I presented before, but want to elaborate a little more on that. The district chose not to apply for this money, and the reason for that is, or a couple of the reasons, was that transportation was not comfortable, buses parked off-site, off the school property for extended period of times for students to use. It only covered device only, it did not cover subscription costs. We would have had to provide additional monies for subscription costs. Also, other districts had been doing this, found that they either had to keep the buses running in order to keep the equipment functioning, or had to purchase expensive solar equipment, keep the technology operating where people could remote in and have Wi-Fi access. And then we also found out that in areas where hotspot access was available, or cellular connection available, it was more economical and more data, students would have more data capacity if we provided mobile hotspots. So we chose not to apply for the money for the Wi-Fi on buses. You've seen the access points, which provide mobile devices. The learning management platform, there's an application process where we did apply for a few more campus licenses for the district. And, and the extended school year EC funding was an application process where Ms. Bullard did apply to the state and did receive $122,191. So there are additional revenue resources, which are one-time, of 3.35 million dollars that we could use. Again, want to emphasize there one time, the majority of that money does expire on December 30th, with the CARES Act direct money being available till September 30th, 2021. So we want to hold that in reserve as much as possible, since it does have the most flexibility. So again, you've seen what we know and what we don't know. Want to reemphasize, we will receive 1.8 million of CARES Act direct funding after sharing with the private schools. What we don't know is how much of that is going to be needed, or how much more money is going to be needed to cover unknown costs associated with opening under DHHS and DPI guidelines. I provided a number last year, or not last year, last month. Some research shows be upwards of 1.7 million to open schools, and that's in a smaller school district than ours. But we anticipate there'll be some significant costs that we're going to have to cover of opening schools. What impact will COVID-19 have on federal funds and other potential cuts? I mentioned that before, and we still don't know for federal funding. One thing we're, we're not sure of, but we're hearing, there is potential for other federal funding exists with COVID-19 costs right now. U.S. Congress has talked about another round of funding that will go to K-12, or a portion will go to K-12 education to help with COVID-19 costs. As a portion of the CARES Act direct money was DPI State Reserve that the state board did take action on, and there's a bunch of items, but we're not exactly sure still what will be funding, funded for the districts and how much that we may see of that and how much their programs that DPI would administer at the DPI level. So we're still waiting guidance and waiting information on that. So those are things we don't know. And then again, bottom line is how much of this money will be available to cover our fixed cost increases that we have at 1.4, almost 1.4 million that you saw on the previous Additional, additional stuff that you've seen related to House Bill 1043, which I covered on the other slide, one item is 4.5 million for cybersecurity. It's part of the state board money. It's not going to the state board until August, but there's some uncertainty of whether that will be allotted out to the school districts, or that's going to be a program administered by DPI. Wanted to point that out. So under the House Bill 1043, will there be subsequent state or federal reduction? One that we know of already, don't know how it's going to impact us locally yet, is that there's already a reduction to PRC 069, which is the at-risk funding category. So there's going to be a $5.4 million reduction at the state level. We don't know how that'll trickle down, but we're already seeing reductions coming. After our final budget resolution, we're estimating additional funding that's going to go back into fund balance at approximately $600,000. I say estimate because we don't know until after our auditors have come in and finalized their audit what that number will actually be, but wanted to make you aware that there's potential for about 600,000 to go back into our fund balance. This slide is all new. You have not seen that, this before. I didn't put it in blue since all of it is new to you. House Bill 1023, which is section law 202080, provides $7 million for personal protective equipment or PPE. We're still waiting guidance. Is that going to be stuff that's going to be distributed directly, that money distributed to the LEAs to cover PPE? Or will it be administered through DPI where they use that money and purchase PPE and distribute out to the school districts? One thing we do know is that the $7 million is not used for the money that the governor and DHHS is applying with mask and PPE that they're distributing out to the school districts. There's additional $5 million for EC grants, 40,000, that is the maximum amount that Moore County Schools can receive. And, and talking with Lucinda Dedman, she is already working, or maybe she's already, actually already applied for this additional $40,000 in EC grant money. I know Ms. Wall Miller asked about this in last meeting, or last session, last board meeting, where we found out more guidance. And in House Bill 1023, there is 3.9 million school lunch co-pay, which provides school lunches at no cost to students of all grades who qualify for reduced-priced meals. But what we don't know is will that funding be allocated out to the school districts or how it's going to be implemented from the DPI nutrition area? We're still seeking guidance on how that can play out. And just want to point out that this 3.9 million was diverted And just want to point out that this 3.9 million was diverted from the school bus replacement fund. So that school bus replacement fund will be decreased by that 3.9 million for fiscal year '21, and it is a one-time reduction for school bus replacement funding. And then, not sure if the board has heard about this or not, the school technology fund, or funds and forfeiture money was reduced, 18 million that typically go to school nutrition, not school nutrition, excuse me, school technology, which is about 150,000 last year to school technology. So we're going to be reduced because that money was diverted over to the school business modernization program. On a previous slide, you heard me talk about school modernization where Link has increased our costs due to this. This money is going to the School Business Modernization Program Office to continue working with the pilots on implementing those new systems, not Link, the new systems that were awarded, the contracts. So hopefully at some point, we'll see benefit to this, but in the short term, our school technology fund is going to be hit about 150,000 reduction in FY '21 due to the diversion of funds and forfeiture money to School Business System Modernization Program. So in summary, where do we go from here? You see here, our fixed cost increase began 1.155 to 1.355. Our remaining consolidation cost of 320,000, and then the highest priority needs of the board of 1.4 million. So you're looking there at roughly 3 million of fixed costs and highest priority needs that we'll be facing going into FY '21. Happy to answer any questions. Happy to have Dr. Grimace provide any thoughts before we go to questions.
Thank you, Mr. Cox. Dr. Grimace, would you like to add to that?
No, ma'am. No, thank you.
Are there questions from the board for Mr. Cox?
Mr. Cox?
Yes, sir.
This is John Weaver. On page six, the items that are under House Bill 1043, do any of those funds identified under the House bill offset or have the potential to offset any of our fixed costs?
I would say no, these don't offset any of our fixed costs. These are one-time funding. Let me go back to our fixed costs. You see, you've got class size, teachers for class mandate, none of that money can be used for that. None of that money is allocated for charter school increase. None of that money can be used for our benefit rate increases. It can't be used for teachers, and then there is, none of that money can be used for the School Business System Modernization Mandate.
So the answer is no, none of it can be used to offset our fixed cost increases. Is that correct?
Yes, sir, that is correct.
Thank you. I have one other question. I believe in prior meetings, you had stated that the 1.8 million under the CARES Act was a minimum that we would receive. Has there been any more information on possibly receiving more?
We received 2 million total allotment in that. There's still ongoing conversation and legal questions around, do we have to share the money for the private schools? And at this time, yes, we do. If something changes in that 1.8 million could increase, but we know it won't go below that 1.8 million. We don't anticipate it going below that 1.8 million. So we still do not know if that's a minimum, or we're going to receive it with more than that.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Cox, did I read in the paper last week or so that the commissioners, or Moore County, the Moore County Governor was receiving additional COVID support funds?
Moore County did receive COVID relief funding. I'm not sure if that's, if they didn't receive additional that I'm aware of, they may have received additional. They had originally received more than 1 million, I'm not sure exactly what that is. A portion of that money, they have allocated to us, 55,000 so we can maintain the summer feeding program, cover the transportation costs associated with summer feeding program until the start of school. And then there is some money that we're working with them on, related around some digital programs, help students and families at all our schools related to remote learning and digital programs.
Thank you. I just knew that the majority of it would not have been allocated to us to assist with any fixed costs during the coming year. I would like to comment too on the item 127, where we've opted not to apply for Wi-Fi on buses. I'd say it bothered me a great deal to think that we would have to just go park buses in neighborhoods and leave them to simply supply Wi-Fi. So I'm glad to see that the assessment on this was such that it is not a viable thing to do to a bus, to leave it basically, I won't call it abandoned exactly, but to leave it unprotected in a neighborhood simply to provide Wi-Fi. So I think that was a very wise decision with that one. Are there additional questions for Mr. Cox?
I have one question, just to follow up on Mr. Weaver's question. Regarding the 1.8 million in one-time revenue that we have from the federal government, is it possible for us to use that for our fixed cost?
Yes. And the intent is to hold that for as long as we can, see what's needed to cover or use for fixed costs, because it does have the most flexibility, and it's not very specific like the other House Bill 1043 is. So yes, that money can be used to cover fixed costs if needed.
Thank you.
Thank you. No further questions? Thank you, Mr. Cox, for providing us with this information. Thank you. All right, Dr. Grimace?
Madam Chair, with your permission, I'll see, Mr. Eklund, are you going to be part of the presentation? Mr. Eklund and Mr. Johnson are our presenters for an advisory to the board on some good news regarding a purchase that we've made previously.
Yes, thank you, Dr. Grimace. Members of the board, we received part of the funding that was provided by the state was the 1043 funds that were specifically earmarked for teacher devices in order to save money in other areas of our budget, specifically the digital learning. You had agreed on May 11th of 2020 for a lease purchase of 125 laptops for Southern Middle and West Pine Middle teachers. We went back to Dell Financial Services and reduced the total number of devices on that lease purchase agreement to fully utilize the available funds from the 1043. In order to do so, we had to reduce the number of devices from 125 to 59 on the lease purchase agreement, and provided with the executive summaries a two-way letter to just memorialize that change in the agreement. So we'll just bring it to you for information purposes, and for any questions you may have.
Are there questions?
Mr. Eklund, do the teachers need those laptops?
Yes.
Do we need, we need the full amount? We're just purchasing them with different funds?
Yeah, we're just purchasing with different funds, exactly. We're reducing the amount of the lease purchase and then utilizing the HB 1043 funds to get the remaining devices to finally take care of Southern Middle and West Pine, which are, again, they haven't had devices refreshed since 2012.
Okay, thank you.
And that 1043 money was available specifically for teacher laptops?
That is correct, that is correct. Those different funds, they put very specific restrictions on what could be done with each funding source.
And when will those laptops arrive?
They've been ordered. I wouldn't, they should be here before the start of school. We're concentrating primarily on getting the student devices ready, and then we should be able to provide them to the teachers at Southern Middle and West Pine for the start of the school year.
Thank you.
Well, as we face continued online learning, virtual learning, obviously, we want our teachers well-equipped since the effort is on them to make those contacts and to be sure to facilitate student learning virtually. So we do want them to have adequate devices to do so. Thank you.
Thank you.
With your permission, Madam Chair?
Yeah, I think we are ready for the long report now.
Yes, ma'am. You have an extended presentation of high quality that will take you to the next step in seeing the extent of our preparations for the coming school year. Does the chair want to take a brief stretch break before you begin that, or do you want to launch into it?
All right, let's take just a five-minute break.
All right, let us come back into order. Dr. Locklear, we're going to let you get started. You've got the information people are waiting to hear, and so we are ready to share it.
If I might, Dr. Locklear, just sort of, just make a statement or two before we begin. Madam Chair, I have been deeply moved this weekend by a number of articles that I've read in the national media and in my professional reading. It really captured well the perspectives of a couple of my colleagues from across the country with the challenge that's before us. I think that it would be my hope that anyone who watches the nightly news on any of the channels you choose to can fully appreciate the challenge that's before every school district across our country. Moore County is not alone. Some would argue that our challenge is impossible, but I'm going to tell you that tonight you're going to hear from some people that bring a level of optimism and a level of creativity and a level of tenacious hard work to that which would appear to be impossible and are finding the possible in it. And I don't say it enough, and I need to say it more, but I cannot compliment our leadership team enough. And as we transition much of the operational decision-making from the district level to the school level, I cannot compliment enough the dozens and dozens of teachers and principals and other staff members who throughout the summer have weighed in and informed the decisions that we've had to make. I want to note that, just as an example, and this is symbolic, that just last Wednesday, last Wednesday, for the first time, the North Carolina Department of Health and Human Services clarified that teachers and staff cannot wear plastic face shields in lieu of face masks. Now, that's not a bad decision. I'm not criticizing that, but we had earlier in the summer, based on the existing science that we had at that time, based on what the Centers for Disease Control had put out, we had purchased plastic face masks for our teachers of our youngest children so that we could ensure that the children could see their teachers' faces. And then, and then, practice and experience informed our Department of Health and Human Services and the CDC and led to the conclusion that we can't do that. And so now we're back to face masks. Throughout the summer, we've now seen manufacturers develop clear face masks. They've become refined. They were all kind of dumb earlier in the summer. Now they're more refined. We're looking at that. But these are the kinds of changes that occur in the assumptions that we make that are occurring as recently as just the last five working days. This group of people and many others that they represent have been trying to manage that situation with this really unequiv- just unequaled commitment to the safety, security, and overall well-being, that is, mental and emotional health of our children and our employees. And it is my hope that nobody will assume that any of us are trying to make any decisions that are callous of the needs of anyone. We are trying to balance the complete needs of our children and our staff, and we remain devoted to that. And, and so, we've received a lot of feedback from individuals in recent weeks, but we remain committed to a Plan B approach, to doing that to the best of our ability and doing that with a complete attention to the safety and security of our folks. One other thing I want to say in setting this up is that the infection rate in North Carolina is such that any reasonable person can look at it and conclude that a school district could be on Plan C or a school district could be on Plan B. Reasonable people can come to those conclusions, and we see a lot of our school districts across the state doing one or the other. Most districts currently are still doing Plan B, but the districts that are going to Plan C are the, are those communities that have the heaviest populations, and so they represent more of the students across the state. But those decisions have all been reasonable based on a lot of careful consideration by each of these districts. No matter what district you are, whenever it is you bring students back, and most of those that are starting with Plan C, I want to remind everyone that they're only doing Plan C for two weeks or four weeks or six weeks, and then they plan to bring the students in. We happen to be doing that right from the beginning. No matter when you bring the students in and when the teachers come in, every school district or most school districts are going to experience students or staff members that have exposure to COVID-19 or they actually are diagnosed. And when that happens, there will be a very carefully prescribed procedure to look at how you respond to that. And Dr. Powers is going to touch on that tonight, but I want to, I want you to really lean in when he does that. There's more to it, more detail than we can cover in one night, but there's been a lot of social media concern and public concern about that, and what we want to convey tonight is that when we get those infections, we will be working closely with our Department of Health and looking at what is the best way to mitigate that potential risk to the rest of our school population, but still maintain the educational access for our students as best as we possibly can. Okay? So, little bit more long-winded than what I had planned, but it's a, it's a context that I wanted to bring this presentation tonight that responds to a lot of the perception that I'm seeing nationally, statewide, and locally. Okay? So with that, I'm going to go ahead and invite my colleagues to get started, and as you have questions, we hope to manage those. Dr. Locklear, forgive me for dragging it out a little bit.
Thank you, Dr. Grimacy. Madam Chair, Board members, thank you again for this opportunity for us, seniors, members of senior staff, district leadership, and school-based staff to come and bring you updates to our return-to-school plans. We last shared with you a recommended plan on July 21st, and our staff and members of our school-based staff, our teachers, our principals, have been working to continue to move that work forward, and so today we bring you updates on that and more details around that. If we'll go to our agenda, we have several items on the agenda, as Chair Carter mentioned. It's quite a lengthy, detailed presentation. We first, very quickly, want to review with you and our public, Moore County Schools' Plan A, B, and C. As we noted, we have to be nimble in between these plans. You approved Plan B. We're going to talk about that a little bit more today and how that's working, but we have to remember we have to be nimble, potentially have to go to Plan C, and then eventually, as we all want, Plan A. We have Dr. Appelfels again to talk about workforce preservation. Last, our last meeting, we talked about without a healthy workforce, we can't do any plan. And so it's important that we continue to update you and our public and our employees about our commitment to do our best to ensure a safe environment and answer their questions, communicate actively. Dr. Powers, as Dr. Grimacy mentioned, will be talking about our response when we have confirmed cases of COVID-19 or suspected presumptive cases, our screening protocols. Bring us some updates on where we are with our athletics, performing arts, summer activities. And then, Ms. Gephardt, our Director for Curriculum and Instruction, has a rock star team here to talk about what performing individual arts are going to look like. Give us a little information around that. We're very appreciative of those, those teachers being here today and our directors being here. She also has some of our teachers to talk about what integrated learning is going to look like at the secondary level. We heard a little bit more from elementary teachers in July. We're going to hear a little bit more from our secondary teachers today, and really appreciate them being here. Mr. Ackland is going to hit on what are the student devices that we can expect, K-12? What's the support we're going to be giving and how we're tackling the access issue to ensure equitable access? Now, Dr. Bowie is going to talk about transportation, sanitation, school facility protocols, child nutrition. And throughout this, we're going to see our principals may jump in from time to time. Dante Poole, our host principal for today, we appreciate him hosting us. We also have Ms. Stephanie Phillips, Principal of Congress High School, and they'll be jumping in from time to time to share their perspective at the, towards the end of the presentation to talk about student orientations, about the school nights and how that looks like in the virtual world. And we also have our Director of Communications, Catherine Murphy, is going to talk about our continued efforts to communicate. And we have Ms. Dawn Vang to give us an update on our all-virtual opportunity for our parents and students to connect virtual academy. Throughout our work, if you'll go to the next slide, please, we've been committed to these considerations and guiding principles. These are our priorities. The first one we continue to have as our top priority, ensure the safety and wellness of our students, staff, and families. I think we said last time, we cannot divorce the importance of the safety and the health of our students and our staff. Without a healthy workforce, we cannot bring forward and facilitate any plan. We want to make sure we're doing all we can to ensure equity in instruction for all students, and that is high-quality, whether it's in-person or whether it's integrated and remote or whether it's all virtual. And we have to continue to be nimble, to adapt. As Dr. Grimacy said, just last Wednesday, we're getting updated information. We have to continue to be adaptable in our planning and making sure we're ready for any plan. And then lastly, we're continuing to commit to improving how we're communicating with all our stakeholder groups, our parents, community, and our employees. And so I'm going to hand it off to Dr. Metcalf to give us a quick overview again of our plans. Dr. Metcalf.
Thank you, Dr. Locklear. As Dr. Grimacy noted, we actually have three plans. Plan A, all K through 12 students return to school, 100% in-person learning, traditional setting, and minimal social distancing. Plan B is the integrated learning approach, combination of in-school and remote learning. We will have social distancing as observed. And then there's Plan C, which is 100% remote learning, school buildings remain closed for all students, and all K through students follow the Moore County Schools' remote learning plan. We are, as Dr. Locklear noted, going to be very nimble. If at any time the board or the governor asks us to move to Plan C, we have a plan for that, and we are ready to do that, and we can move to that. If, as we all hope, we're able to move to Plan A, we're ready to do that as well. Currently, the approved plan is Plan B, and in Plan B, students are grouped, all K through 12 students grouped into two cohorts, if you will, Group A and Group B. Group A would meet in-person, face-to-face, on Monday and Tuesday. Wednesday would be a remote learning day, an online day. And Group B, then, would be meeting in face-to-face on Thursday and Friday. So two days a week with two different cohorts. So how do they get into those cohorts? We've been doing a lot of background work on that. A lot of work has transpired in the last five, six days. Our Transportation Office has been fantastic. They provided lists of bus riders to the assigned cohort based on routes. They provided that to the Planning, Accountability, and Research Office. Kate Faw and her team literally working around the night to complete the list by adding car rider students, making sure that families are together in the same cohort. We want to make sure that if you have three members of your family on, you want them all to be going to school on the A-day cohort or in the B-day cohort. You don't want them mixed. And there's a lot of background work that needs to happen for that to occur in that way, and Kate Faw and her team have worked on that based on family addresses and families, keeping them all together. That information late Friday was provided to our principals, and again, Dr. Grimacy mentioned it, I cannot speak high enough about our principals and the work that they're doing right now. This does not just happen. Scheduling does not just happen. It takes time, and they've been working through the weekend overnight into this week. They're completing their scheduling process, not just for the face-to-face Plan B, but also for the virtual academy that Dawn Vang is going to talk about in a minute. They've been in a place to try to schedule both of those, and it's very complex, very difficult, and they've been working around the clock to make that happen. They also will be charged with notifying parents about whether they're in Cohort A or in Cohort B. We need to be patient. I think that's going to take some time. I would expect that parents will be getting notifications sometimes next week, but they're working very hard to be able to get all that information together. So again, the approved plan is Plan B. Of course, we have the Virtual Academy Connect that parents have signed up for, and Ms. Vang will be providing more information about that later. The first step is staffing that, and that is Dr. Appelfel.
Good afternoon, Mrs. Carter, Board members, and Dr. Grimacy. Thank you for the opportunity to provide you this update. As we are all keenly aware, our employees are the undergirding of all we're about to do to serve our students for the 2021 school year. So this afternoon's update begins with our employees. Our employees have provided the information needed for our principals to generate the necessary plans to ensure instruction for all students, whether our students are served remotely or in-person. You'll hear more about the work of matching student instructional needs with the required personnel later in this presentation. We are pleased that the decision to operate under a Plan B scenario keeps our classified employees, particularly those in child nutrition and transportation, working with their benefits intact. With no state emergency leave, for those at risk, there are simply fewer options available than there were in the spring. Additionally, even under Plan B, these categories of employees may well see a reduction in their work hours because students generally will not be in school on Wednesdays. In addition to preparing teacher assignments, principals also are working to determine current personnel who will be reassigned to oversee virtual learning for employees' children during their assigned virtual learning days. This step permits our teachers to attend to our students with the assurance that their personal children are continuing their own learning. Last week, we reached out to the substitutes who've indicated they will return for the 2021 school year. These 150 or so substitutes were asked to designate a priority school where they will work during the Plan B phase of instruction. This strategy permits us to abide by the directive to limit the number of different people in a given school. Principals will provide any needed training for their priority substitutes, understanding that procedures and protocols will necessarily differ from site to site. The Human Resources Team has developed two resources to assist employees. The first is a set of questions and answers about leave in our current COVID-19 environment. The second resource is a one-page document that summarizes the types of leave that may be available, given certain circumstances. While the print is small, it is our hope that this chart will help employees know whom to call, the questions to ask, and the types of documentation that may be needed should they need to take leave at this time. There continue to be many questions for our employees about safety protocols when someone in our school district environment is infected or quarantined, and these will be addressed later in this presentation by Dr. Powers. I'm happy to answer any questions you may have.
Are there questions for Dr. Appelfel?
Nina, this is Stacy. I used to say that because I'm on video and you can obviously see me, so sorry about that, but I wanted to ask you, do we have enough teachers that want to teach online? And do we have enough teachers that actually want to come into the school and teach?
We ended up, and again, Ms. Vang is going to speak more about that much. The worry was that we would have more virtual teachers than we needed. Actually, we had fewer who needed it for various reasons, and so now principals are actually going out recruiting teachers to fill that need. Ms. Vang will speak in far more detail about that, but thank you for that question.
Thank you.
How have staff been kept informed throughout the summer and about the options available to them?
Do you mean about leave?
Well, both leave and then opting in to virtual learning.
It has really occurred in a lot of different ways. Certainly Catherine Murphy and Laura May through our communications office, they've done a lot of communicating, but the bulk of that communication has come through our principals. Even after employees, we issued a survey to ask staff what needs they may have. Even after staffing completed that survey, principals went back and followed up with the employees who said they might need some accommodation. Because when we sent the survey out, the district had not settled on Plan B, and the settling on a specific plan impacted some folks' decision-making. The option for employees, students, to be able to complete their virtual learning days at school had a significant impact because if teachers don't have a place for their personal children, they can't come and teach and give our students 100%. So I think some of the responses that we've been able to provide in response to what they shared with us has helped.
Thank you.
I think it's fair to add that until the governor made his announcement allowing us to have Plan B as an option, and then until the school board approved that plan for us, we didn't have options to offer to teachers. So this wasn't like going to the grocery store all summer. This, these opportunities for teachers did not make themselves available until just since July 13th.
And I commend them for how quickly they responded. We, we had to push it out quickly, and they responded quickly, so they've really helped as we've tried to put together a plan that both serves our students but also serves our employees.
Very remarkable responsiveness on the part of our teachers. You could tell they were leaning in and ready to participate as soon as we asked. And then our principals as brokers of this process, and Dawn Vang's work and the work of senior team involved with this extraordinary amount of progress since the last time this board met.
Dr. Appelfel, our bus drivers, obviously you touched on that briefly. We won't be running buses on Wednesdays for the most part. Obviously, we're not going to be running as many buses this year as we have Obviously, we're not going to be running as many buses this year as we have in the past. Do we anticipate not being able to employ quite so many bus drivers, or through attrition, through folks opting not to return to the system, will those positions be taken care of?
I think Dr. Bowie will be in a better position to respond in particular, but generally, we always need bus drivers. We have had a number of resignations from bus drivers who just are not comfortable coming back, that, you know, they have health conditions they're concerned about. And so, as you'll recall, our school board passed a policy requiring some categories of classified employees to also drive a bus as a condition of employment to help meet that need. But again, I hope Dr. Bowie perhaps can give more detailed information about what those needs are at this given time.
Well, I know that a bus driver is, it's a part-time position, and that we do have a lot of older folks who opt to drive buses as part of their retirement, so we definitely can assume that some of those will have health risks that they, that keep them from wanting to continue.
That is correct, and we are seeing that.
And we will come back to that, Madam Chair.
Dr. Affenfeld?
Yes, sir.
Have all teachers requesting consideration for the Connect Virtual Academy been accommodated?
Ms. Vang will be able to give you those specifics. The data were provided to principals late last week, and so they're still putting those plans together, Mr. Weaver, but I think she'll have more detailed information.
Okay.
Thank you.
And Dr. Affenfeld, where do employees access this leave eligibility chart?
There's going to, in fact, I sent it to an employee just today, but these will be housed on the reentry page under a human resources tab. Ms. Murphy will be able to tell you if that's live yet, but that's been a work in progress. We have worked with employees through the summer on leave. We've had folks who've had to quarantine. We've had employees who have been positive and who have had to be out of work. So we have, we have worked on a very small scale with these situations this summer. We just understand that when the bulk of our employees come back in August or now this month, we are going to have to accommodate and work with them on the leave that may be available to assist them.
Thank you.
With your permission, Madam Chair, I'll invite Dr. Powers for the next portion of the presentation.
Pleased to have the opportunity to come before you and share information with you about our screening protocols for the district and how we'll actually be daily screening all students, staff, and visitors to our campuses. We'll share with you that so much work has been done over this summer, and as Dr. Grimacy alluded to, you know, we, it seems like information is changing, if not daily, it sure seems like it, from DHS, but we have utilized all of that guidance from the Department of Health and Human Services to guide how we have developed these protocols, and they're all based on that guidance. Just to quickly review, I know this information was shared last time, but one particular document from the Department of Health and Human Services is the guidance related to response to suspected, presumptive, and confirmed cases of COVID-19 for K-12. This is a really, really valuable resource that both at the district and at the school levels, principals will find extremely helpful. The guide includes staff roles, flow charts, screening charts, and protocols. The protocols describe the steps to be taken if an employee or a student screens positive, and we'll be looking at an example of one of those protocols, and I'll be walking you through that a little later in the presentation. And then this document also outlines how our Moore County Health Department will need to support our school system as we work through some of these issues when we, when we do have positive cases, which that is also very helpful. So let's look at a few of the resources that are provided. I'm going to share with you a couple of the flow charts to begin with, and the first one is a screening flow chart, and you can see as students, staff, or visitors are screened, if there are no flags, they pass the screening. So they have, you know, a temperature of less than 100.4, and they are able to answer the screening questions, they're going to proceed to school. So if they're a student, they're going to proceed to their classroom and go about their day. Same way for staff. If through that screening we find that there's an exposure but no symptoms, so an exposure, that's going to tell us that's going to be someone answering one of those questions, know that they have been around someone who maybe has had COVID or has been exposed to COVID, then those individuals are going to be excluded from school, and they're going to be excluded for either 14 days or until they were, if, or if they were to come back with a negative COVID test. In the event that the individual is screened and we find that there's a diagnosis but no symptoms, so maybe they have had to have a test for some reason, and they are found to have COVID and be positive but have no symptoms, you know, they're also excluded, obviously. They would not be allowed to come to school, and they will be home for 10 days, and that 10 days would be since the first positive COVID-19 test, so 10 days from their, their positive test. If we have an individual who exhibits at least one symptom, which would be fever, chill, shortness of breath, difficulty breathing, new cough, or new loss of taste or smell, these individuals would also be excluded. If they're confirmed positive for COVID-19 or the person has not been tested, they would be at home 10 days from, from their first symptoms and until they're fever-free for 24 hours without medication, and they have symptom improvement, including, including improvement of cough or shortness of breath. If these individuals with one symptom are found to be negative, they have a test and are found to be negative, once they have no fever for 24 hours without fever-reducing medication, and they have felt well, they may return to school. And if they have a symptom and the doctor confirms that that symptom has no relation whatsoever to COVID, then they'd follow our normal policy, which again would be fever-free for 24 hours without medication and no symptoms. The next flow chart I'd like to share with you is a staff roles flow chart, so this kind of outlines what happens when a person is screened, and this deals specifically with our students. So the child arrives at school, that child is going to be screened and have their temperature taken. Any employee can be designated to do that screening. So principals have discretion at their schools to decide who that person's going to be that will do the initial screening. If the child passes the screening, no problem, then they're going to go into class. Same way if it were to be a staff member again, they're going to go to class and go about their day. Okay? If it's found through that initial screening that there's either an exposure, diagnosis, or symptoms, then that child is going to be one of two things. There, if, if the parent is not at school, so maybe they're, maybe this is a situation where the parent has left, the child is there alone, and they, they don't pass that initial screening, they'll be taken to an isolation room, and I'm going to share more with you about what an isolation room looks like in just a moment. If the parent is still there, that child would, would be isolated in the car with the parent. And then what's going to happen is our school nurse or the designated, the designated backup for our school nurse would be notified, and that child is going to be rescreened, maybe, you know, 15 minutes later. It's possible, sometimes for different reasons, you know, our temperatures do get elevated, or perhaps someone didn't quite understand the question, so it's important that we rescreen again to make sure, and it's also important that our medical professionals are the ones that are making those decisions related to if we're going to exclude someone. So it would be ideally the school nurse, if he or she is on campus, but we know we don't have a school nurse for every campus, so we're going to have to have some designated backups who are lay, laystaff members who will be trained, and I'll talk more about that as well, who will reevaluate that child. If on that second screening they pass, they're going to go on to class. Okay? If they fail the screening a second time, then that child's going to be excluded, and that child would be sent home and go, they would be provided with some information about what their next steps are from the school nurse. Now, also, you'll see to the right where the student goes to class, it could be that the student comes to school that day and they pass the screening, no problem. If, you know, about lunchtime, the teacher notices that, well, that child's cheeks sure are flush, and they don't, they're, they're not acting like themselves, so they're, they're rescreened, their temperature's taken, and it turns out, oh, they do have a fever, passed 100.4. Then at that ti, at that time, the child's going to be isolated, and we kind of go through the flow chart again, they would be screened a second time, and then if, if they fail that second screening again, then they're going to be sent home as soon as possible. So our daily screening procedures, and exactly what those will look like in Moore County Schools. So campus entry will only be allowed at designated screening entrances, so that's more of a challenge on some campuses than others, but our principals are working, you know, to designate what are the areas where, and communicate that, obviously. Where can you come on campus to access and be screened? All students, staff, and visitors will be screened daily upon arrival at school, so anyone that's coming into a campus must be screened. So they must have their temperature taken, they must answer the screening questions. Can everyone hear me over the rain? I'm trying.
I can hear you, but it needs to go loud.
Is this, raise up your mic? Just a reminder that our screening questions that we ask, which I'm sure everyone, well, everyone answered to come into this school today, those are our questions that we've gotten from, from DHS that they have provided. Individuals will have their temperatures taken, and that'll either happen via a thermal scanning kiosk or a touchless digital forehead thermometer, so there'll be, everything related to taking temperatures will be touchless. And then, as I stated earlier, it's important that we take those temperatures first thing in the morning, but staff will also need to monitor for new symptoms developing throughout the day by making a visual inspection of students for signs of illness, such as flushed cheeks, fatigue, or irritability, and if any such signs are noted, those, those individuals will need to be screened and have their temperatures taken.
So, Dr. Powers, can I ask a quick question, please?
Yes, ma'am.
As far as the screening, it will be similar to how we came in this afternoon as far as the thermal scan? That's, that's how students?
Yes, ma'am. The, yeah, the device that you use today to come in is one of the thermal scanning kiosks. That came from Meridian Company in Aberdeen that makes those. We were able to work with them to get those. We don't have enough for every school, but we, we have 25, and we've distributed those to our larger campuses now that we know which school, which schools are going to have the most students and, you know, related to the Connect Academy are actually coming to campus. So those are actually going to be delivered to schools this week. So just to talk for a moment about exclusion criteria, obviously, as I've, as I've mentioned, for a person to be excluded, they would answer yes to one of the screening questions or have a temperature of 100.4 or higher. I had also mentioned the isolation room. So it's, it's very important that as students come back to school, that we keep sick children and well children separate as much as possible. So once we know that a child may be symptomatic, they're going to need to go as soon as possible to our isolation room. Now, understand, the isolation room is not for a child who falls on the playground and we think they may have a broken wrist, okay? We know that child is not symptomatic for COVID, so the isolation room is only for students or staff, perhaps in some cases, who are showing symptoms of COVID. So the isolation room would not be the school health room, where the nurses' office generally is. Every school has designated an isolation room that will only be used for that purpose. That isolation room will be monitored, so if there is a student in the isolation room, there must be a staff member who monitors that child. Ideally, the isolation room would have glass in the door so that the staff member could sit outside and watch through the window to monitor the, the child or children. If that's not the case, then a staff member would be inside the room. Obviously, everyone would be masked, and they would maintain social distance. At that point, obviously, after the child, we've confirmed that they've failed the screening, the parent would be contacted to come pick the child up as soon as possible. You know, ideally, that's going to happen pretty quickly. Unfortunately, we know that sometimes that doesn't happen as quickly as we would like. So however, you know, the child must be picked up. A child that's symptomatic cannot ride the bus home. We know we can't do that. So we'll do whatever it takes to continue to call home, to call all the contacts that we have on the list. If need be, we'll employ the use of our SROs, our counselors, our social workers, may have to go out and make a home visit to the home to see if someone's there, maybe knock on a neighbor's door to say, hey, got a sick child that we need to, you know, their parents need to come pick them up. And at the very least, we'll leave a note on the door, but we'll do everything that we can to contact those parents. I'd also mentioned the need for school nurse backups. Because we don't have a nurse at every school, each school will have two laystaff members designated to serve in the role as a nurse backup, and the principal, the principal will designate who those people are. Those nurse backups will receive a special training that was developed by the state and provided to Phyllis Magnuson as well as our school nurses, and the school nurse for each school will provide that training to the layperson backups. All right, at this time, I'd like to ask Stephanie Phillips if she wouldn't mind coming up, and she's going to share a little bit with you about how Pinecrest High School will be implementing their daily screening protocols.
Dr. Powers, before you leave, if the, if the student is, has a temperature and they go home, are, is one of the criteria that they get tested or what happens? Once they go home with, with the 100-plus temperature, do, are we asking them to get tested?
Yes, ma'am, and we're going to provide, we're going to provide a sheet of information to anyone who fails a screening, whether it be answering the questions or a temperature of 100.4 or higher, and they're going to be directed to contact their physician, their medical provider. And if they don't have one, we also have information that, that tells them what to do related to not having one, who they can contact to be seen by a physician. So that will be provided. And I'm not done, I'm just going to ask Ms. Phillips to come up and share, and then I'll finish up, and we'll have a chance to ask more questions.
Good afternoon. At Pinecrest High School, we're going to have two points of entry. We're calling them controlled entry points. One will be the auditorium, and the other will be the Fox Gymnasium. In those areas, students will be allowed to enter six feet apart, they will be asked the COVID screening questions, and then they will have their temperature checked. At that point, they will either step to an administrator if they've answered yes to one of the screening questions or have a high fever over 100.4. If not, they will continue on to our campus. Also in those locations, we'll have our breakfast kiosk, that way the students can do, go through the controlled entry points, grab their breakfast, and report directly to First Period. Any questions?
So how will you be closing off other points of entry onto the campus?
So our stu, our student parking lot will have all the gates closed except for one, the one that's the last gate in front of the Fox Gymnasium. We'll have faculty and staff along with administrators monitoring those entry points. And down at the RELE Auditorium, we will also have the gate to the front office monitored, and only the gate into that parking lot open. So we'll be utilizing extra staff to make sure that we've monitored all the gates and points of entry on our campus.
And how long would you anticipate it taking to process 1,000 students coming in each day?
Well, right now, on A-Day, we are at 788, so a little less than 1,000, and we are hoping, starting at 8:15 every- And we are hoping, starting at 8:15 every day, that we can get those students through very quickly and roll first period at 8:45. Now honestly, I realize that I hope for the best and live in reality and that after opening week, I'll be better prepared to answer that question.
I'm sure you will be.
Ms. Phillips, what percentage of that 700 and some students, uh, will be enrolled in, uh, Sand Hills Community College courses at the beginning of the day?
Uh, out of those 788, I am not sure about that for first period, Dr. Bob.
Last year, first period was a period when juniors and seniors tended to be involved in Sand Hills classes, be they online or on the Sand Hills campus.
Yes, sir. First and fourth period are our most utilized class periods for Sand Hills.
So it is enough, though, that you would anticipate some mitigating effect on that 700 and 300?
Oh, absolutely.
Ms. Phillips, um, what about those students that come late, either because they've been at Sand Hills or, um, they've just come late to school that day? What, what will be the procedures for those, those students?
So once we close down the carpool line, we lock that gate. We implemented that last year. So students can only enter the campus, late students through building one. We will have support staff on golf carts monitoring the parking lot and that line. And all students will go to, through the front office along with visitors. So once we get rolling in first period, the point of entry now shifts to building one.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Phillips.
I will also share as our, as our largest school in the district, uh, Pinecrest will be received. They'll actually receive four of our thermal scanning kiosks. That'll help support them as well as, they'll, obviously, they'll also have a number of, uh, of digital, uh, forehead scanning thermometers. So we hope that that will also help there as well.
Might, might I ask one other question? Um, well, at what point in the day will you be scanning, uh, faculty members as they arrive? I'm assuming that anyone coming on campus is going to undergo the exact same screening procedure.
Yep.
So at what point will t- will you set up for teachers?
Yes, ma'am. Uh, and as you said, yes, staff, students, visitors, anyone who comes on campus will go through a screening. Uh, there'll be a designated entry for staff as well. Uh, so each school will have, you know, this is where our staff will come to be screened. Uh, there'll be sa- and it'll be the same procedure. They'll have their temperature taken, they'll be asked the questions. Uh, and that would happen, obviously, before students arrive. Okay. The, uh, the final document I want to share with you, this also comes from the, the DHS, HHS, uh, guidelines uh, for their screening protocols. Uh, and I know that's hard to see, but I'll do my best to walk you through it. So, uh, there's a, there's a specific screening protocol for, uh, any number, uh, of possible categories of what may occur for a screening. So for example, this one, uh, is for a student whose parent or guardian is not present, uh, to immediately support, you know, the child. Uh, and the category is for that student has exposure but no symptoms. So, uh, you can see that it goes, the, the protocol goes through and shares, uh, first, what to do for exclusion. So it talks about, just to summarize what's written there, it talks about the isolation room until the parent, uh, can be contacted and the child can be picked up. Uh, in this particular instance, the student with exposure, no symptoms. The student may return to school 14 days after last close contact. Uh, if no symptoms develop, nor do they have a positive COVID test. Uh, and the student should participate in remote learning while out. Uh, it then goes down to talk about infection control. And just to summarize, uh, those bullets, basically, it's talking about, uh, required face, uh, face masks, face coverings, and social distancing. And then we go to transportation. And this is where it, it very clearly stipulates that students may not utilize group ta- transportation such as the bus in order to leave the school facility. And then the, uh, and then DHHS clearly states that the local health department should be involved to support and provide direction related to the final four categories of notification, closure, cleaning, and communication with students, families, and staff. So that, that's very clear, uh, there and how the health department will be expected, uh, to support us and provide direction to us. I can share, uh, that as a district, we've been in contact with the health department over the summer. Uh, we've also, uh, and that's been, of course, related to our protocols in real new school. And we do have a meeting scheduled for this Wednesday, uh, at 11:45 with a team from the health department and our Moore County Schools, uh, officials as well. Uh, so what we'll be doing there is further sharing information and finalizing our plans. So we look forward to that meeting. Uh, we look forward to continuing to work closely with our health department, uh, and for their support, you know, as we move forward. So I will say, you know, one last thought to kind of sum this up, and it's kind of what Dr. Grimacy said at the beginning. You know, it's not a matter of, uh, of if, but when we do have confirmed cases in our schools. And of course, that's even with our best efforts, which I can assure you, uh, everyone is given. Uh, when that happens, you know, we'll work with the health department, uh, on who to exclude. But just know that when that does happen, that exclusion's going to start with individuals. You know, if we get one or two confirmed cases, that doesn't mean we're closing half the school, we're closing the whole school down. It starts with individuals and from there, you know, we'll move to cohorts. Those, those A-group and B-groups that may be together, you know, that, that may be that some of those, uh, if someone is positive, it may mean that there's an exposure in that cohort. And some of that cohort, including the teacher, you know, may have to go home, uh, for a certain amount of time. You know, then we'll move to classes if needed, maybe partial, maybe partial schools, maybe the whole school at some point. But again, all those decisions will be made in consultation with our health department and based on their recommendations. And when we do have to, when things do have to happen and perhaps we do have to close, uh, know that that's not meaning that we're closing for the rest of the, uh, you know, for the rest of the month or the semester. It's, it's, you know, the guidance is probably two to five days, you know, for deep cleaning. Uh, and then, you know, school continues. Now, of course, all that's to say, uh, you know, if things go well, you know, if things go well, those are the things that are going to happen. You know, if things continue to trend in the wrong direction, you know, it could be that at some point we come back and have to have a conversation about, is there a need to move to a, to move to Plan C instead of Plan B? But we all know that we hope it's the other direction, that when we talk again about this, we're moving to Plan A and not Plan C. So, all right. At this time, I'll be glad to answer any questions that you have. I have one final slide, but it's related to athletics. So any questions around our screening protocols?
Seth, I have two questions for you.
Sure.
Um, and this may be talked about, um, later on, but what about the children who ride the bus? How are they going to get screened, um, before they come into school? And I'll let you answer that.
Sure. Yeah, yes, ma'am. And that's a, that's a good question. Uh, and I'll let Dr. Boy when he comes up is going to talk a little bit about transportation and, and cover, uh, the protocol as well for, for screening on the buses.
Okay, that's fine. And then, um, oh, sorry. If students go home, say they have a fever, are their brother or sister from that school going to go home too? Or is that something?
That's a great question and the answer is yes. So if a, if a, if an individual screens positive at school, uh, any members of that student's family, uh, would be, would go home as well. So if that's a, maybe it's a teacher who screens positive and they've got two kids in the school. If that's the case, everyone goes home.
Thank you.
Dr. Powers, would that cover, um, other schools as well if a, a sibling is at another campus?
Yes, ma'am, it would. So if you're living in the same household, that would apply.
I'd say officially, we would be consulting with the health department on that final determination. But it's highly likely and logical to assume that all family members would then be quarantined.
Yes, sir.
One of the questions that parents have brought up is, um, if my child has to stay out for 14 days, what are we supposed to do about school? But one of the benefits of the fact that these children are already experiencing some virtual learning is that they will not be out of school. So would they be counted absent during this enforced 14-day period or 10-day period, whatever it might be, um, if they're still able to continue with their classwork in a virtual format?
No, ma'am. And that would be our desire. Our desire would be that while these students are out and hopefully, you know, if they're asymptomatic or if they're, when they're not sick, that they would be participating in virtual learning and thus they would not have to be counted absent. And they would still be getting instruction, although be, it be virtual and not face-to-face. So you're, yes, ma'am.
So along those same lines, if a teacher must stay home for that time period, but they continue to teach, they're not taking sick days?
It could absolutely be that if a teacher were to be exposed and was not sick and had to be at home and could still work, you know, if possible, we would certainly want that teacher to work and just kind, and convert that teacher to, to working virtually. Any other questions related to screening protocols?
With your permission, Madam Chair?
Let's keep going.
Back, back to, uh, Dr. Powers, you've got one more slide.
One more slide, just to update, uh, everyone related to athletics. And, uh, as you're aware, Moore County Schools have planned to allow athletic workouts and performing arts activities to begin on a limited basis today, uh, Monday, August 3rd. But due to, and we've all just heard, the thunderous rain, right? So due to, uh, the hurricane, uh, that's projected to give us some really bad weather over the course of the afternoon and tonight, possibly tomorrow, uh, those, uh, workouts and activities have been postponed to this Wednesday, August 5th. So those, those workouts and planned activi- and summer activities for, uh, performing arts uh, may start on this Wednesday, August 5th. And although the North Carolina High School Athletic Association moved into Phase Two uh, of their athletic re-entry plan, uh, effective today, schools could start to do Phase Two. Moore County Schools is not opening and operating under Phase Two. We're starting with Phase One. So when, when our student athletes do come back out on Wednesday, uh, all of our coaches are very aware. And I know, uh, Jeff Hewitt did a great job of talking with you about that, uh, at your last work session. Uh, we'll be starting under Phase One. Uh, and then finally, middle school athletics and extracurricular activities, uh, will not resume until further notice. Middle school's a little bit different. You know, generally, middle school student athletes do not work out in the summer. At this point, what we're doing is still summer workouts because, uh, the High School Athletic Association, uh, you know, has delayed the start of the fall sports season until September 1st at the earliest. So at this point, we don't feel like there's a reason to push forward with middle school athletics.
Dr. Powers, if I could add, as of, uh, my meeting on Thursday with all of the superintendents in our region, I also would report that Moore County is at the most advanced level of all the districts in our region. So although we're at Phase One and we do have a few parents that are disappointed with that, they think we should be more aggressive, um, it is, we need to point out that we have the most aggressive plan in our region as of now. We are at the advanced point of this. So by us beginning workouts on Wednesday, we are the first to do that, based on what the superintendent's told me on Thursday. Now others are kind of watching us and, um, looking at perhaps beginning workouts, but there's nobody in our region at Phase Two. Um, in fact, nobody really as of Thursday was on Phase One. So, just want to make sure that that's, that's real clear to everybody. Thank you, Dr. Powers. Now we have Ms. Gephardt and Friends.
Good evening, Madam Chair, Dr. Grimacy, members of the board. I am very pleased to present to you today some wonderful things that are going on with our arts program and in preparation of getting ready for the school year. We know as, as school ended so abruptly on March 13th, Moore County teachers rose to the occasion. And I, I want you to know how proud I am of all of these individuals. They sent me pictures. I said, tell me some of the things you did in the arts as I met with them. You'll see in the center of that, some teacher looked and said, I knew a lot of my kids didn't have art supplies at home. So I had them do, uh, a color circle and they just went and found objects in their home. So when I say the arts are alive and well in Moore County Schools, it is because of our teachers' creativity and their dedication that it is a wonderful experience. As we go to the next slide, we know that our DHHS guidelines, we have two basic requirements that we have to follow within the arts. One is to make sure that we limit the use of equipment. Make sure we're just sanitizing the equipment. So we're very conscientious that we have to have protocols in place that the teachers are working with me on to make sure that we have time to disinfect and make sure that we're cleaning the equipment. And then to make sure that we're not having large groups, that we're keeping that social distancing on, and following those parameters. So we are so excited that even though we may not have a large group, we might be able to do a video and promote that video to go out. We also know that, um, one of the pieces that I found very interesting is that kids have to face the same direction. So the teachers have already been working tirelessly to make sure that the desk are able to be sanitizing. Kids are facing that same direction. So we've got a lot of things that we're putting in place for the arts, but I have some very special folks here. So one of the things that I absolutely love is Adam Fall with his Drama and Theater Department at Pinecrest High School. And he's going to talk to you about some explicit specifics that they're doing in theater arts to keep our children safe.
Madam Chair, board members, and Dr. Grimacy, I am the Theater Arts Director at Pinecrest High School, where I am beginning my 18th year. Board Chair, sorry about that. Uh, I would like to start with a celebration for the arts that got lost in the craziness of the COVID. After many years of lobbying, countless letters, and phone calls to legislators, and tireless advocacy by multiple organizations, the arts graduation requirement was signed into law, helping to ensure equitable access to quality arts instruction for every North Carolina student. And a little personal celebration, many of you know that Kate and I adopted our second child, Jacob, a few months ago. Those of you who work on Zoom with Kate see him quite often. He was born on March 13th, the last day students were in class. We say that the world shut down for him. And about an hour ago, I just got a text, he rolled over for the first time. As theater artists, we are well-versed in finding new and creative solutions to difficult problems. Theater has survived for thousands of years by being creative, adapting, and overcoming. Theater incorporates all of the art forms. It embraces new technology and it adapts to stay current with the ever-changing culture. This is who we are, this is what we do, and this is what we will continue to do. However, our optimism is tempered by reality. We are keeping up with the current trends of school systems around the state as well as the rising numbers of confirmed cases, hospitalizations, and mortality. While we are hopeful about remaining face-to-face, we are also making plans for the real possibility of a shift to Plan C. Nationwide, playwrights and publishers are quickly adapting, working with schools to post recordings of productions when having an audience is not possible. Additionally, playwrights have been creating new work or adapting existing pieces to be performed fully virtually. In fact, the Pinecrest Players Senior Show for the spring of 2000, for, uh, spring of 2020 was 10 Ways to Survive the Quarantine. Editing was recently finished and the production will be posted online at the beginning of this school year to start us off on a high note. At the state level, the North Carolina Theater Conference just announced that while the Play Festival, as we know it, will not be able to happen this year, there will be a virtual showcase that will allow schools to meet the moment. Schools will be encouraged to record their work in whatever medium works for their situation, whether that be a socially-distanced physical production, a fully virtual piece recorded online and edited through iMovie, or a hybrid of both. This will give a platform to share and celebrate the work of student artists all over the state. And in our classrooms, like many of our colleagues in the music classrooms, we will be shifting away from a focus on performance. Students will have the opportunity to work on monologues and scenes, but our focus will be more on analysis, reflection, and the process as a whole. We will teach theater history remotely. Students will read digital copies of public domain scripts while at home. And we will use online design programs such as SketchUp to create three-dimensional scenic designs. Additionally, in my classroom, we are taking our virtual portfolios that document design, production, and performance and trans- transforming those into student websites. As we look to begin this year, I return to my earlier statement, optimism tempered by reality. During that first week of classes, we will meet our students at the door with energy and excitement and we will have to remind ourselves not to give them a big hug. But we know that this year will be a shadow of what we are used to and what we hope to revenge, eventually return to when it is safe. This year, as the world continues to shift and as we face further unprecedented times, our primary focus will be to give some semblance of normalcy, not only for the students but for ourselves. We know that many of these stu- for many of these students, these things are what keep them coming to school daily. They're able to find a home, a safe place, and a family in our They're able to find a home, a safe place, and a family in our classrooms. Thank you for your time and attention, and I'm happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Are there questions for Mr. Fall?
No, I just have a comment, Mr. Fall. I'm so excited to hear about the plans that you have in place to focus on the different aspects of theater arts that can be focused on during this time and, and taking the optimism for that. And I too am optimistic, given what I have seen during the summer with some of our theater arts programs and our nonprofit organizations across the county, and they have been able to produce and, and develop some theater. And so, I, I am excited to hear your excitement, and I look forward to, to what you all produce in the fall.
Thank you.
And I certainly hope it's Hamilton for the spring.
We'll, we'll have to see when Lynn Manuel releases those rights.
Other questions? As we know, our teachers are hard at work, coming up with ideas and, and strategies to make distance learning, socially-distanced learning, and online learning a possibility for our students, and we appreciate the efforts that so many of our teachers have already put in.
And there's more to come.
You heard the great ideas that Adam Fall has, and he's on, he's working with our new Union Pines teacher on Wednesday this week, and they're gonna, it's gonna be a great year with our theater arts. But now, we have our band director, Rob Hill, who's gonna come up, and I always coined this, I said, "Rob's gonna say it's all good," because that's how Rob rolls, and, and we all know that. But one example that Rob and his team are gonna work with me on Wednesday are some specific protocols to, again, to ensure safety of our students, but to also ensure that they have opportunities for, for band in a rich environment to learn to play instruments and continue to play at the level of music that we expect here in Moore County. So, this one example is just an example that you might have as a precaution to make sure that they're not sharing the sticks. We also know that, we talked, as Rob and I have talked, I'm hearing a lot about a flipped classroom in band, where they're teaching smaller groups, and then they're actually having the kids practice online. So, I'm gonna let Rob talk to you about some of the things he has in play, in play.
So, just to follow up, it will be all good, I'm telling you that right now. As Adam had mentioned, arts teachers by nature, we just are raised in that kind of environment to react anyway. So, the way I, my outlook is, is very, very positive, because, you know, you show up and you react. And Ms. Phillips talked about the realities of what we're gonna face the first day, and you show up, we react, and we make it right, you know? And that's, that's the way I'm approaching it. We do have some guidelines. Well, first, I'd like to thank you all for letting me speak here on behalf of the arts. School Board, Moore County Schools, it is apparent that you are very supportive of the arts, just by giving us the opportunity to speak on behalf of our students. So, thank you, thank you very much for that. There's a few things I would like to reiterate about the importance of an arts education, and this is why we do what we do. It supports social, emotional well-being of students, and we can all agree that we need that right now in these times. Helps create a welcoming school environment, allows safe and positive self-expression, and is part of a well-rounded education according to the Every Student Succeed Act, which is federal language. And I'm glad that music education is part of that, that language is in, in the Every Student Succeeds Act. So, it's clear that our district understands the importance of these statements. So, kind of, Ms. Gephardt alluded to what that will kind of look like in the music world. We have some guidelines that have come out by the National High School State Association for Performing Arts, and it's not unlike what you see here. If you could kind of picture this environment to be an inner, inside rehearsal space. One of the ideas that I've had with speaking with my colleagues in the outside world of things is to be able to go inside or outside, depending on the weather. One of the safest environments is outside, and as many of you know, we have very, very strong programs here in the marching band side of things. All of our music programs are strong, whether it be indoor or outdoor. And what we can do is follow the athletic guidelines, so those are already in the makings. We know how to get kids from point A to B, and we can still rehearse in groups, and that's something that we have done also, by, you know, growing up through the arts world of things. We work in small groups, and we fine-tune, and then we put them together in the big picture. And so, one of the visions that we have is a lot of fundamental training in smaller groups, and in preparation possibly for next year to come out of the gate strong, meaning that we missed the whole massedness of the summer, and we can still kind of get into it a little bit. But at this point in time, we take little groups, and we focus, and we really focus on fundamentals, and then we can really nurture, especially the younger players, to really start to develop those skills, and you can really do those in small ensemble settings, meaning that we could even take this group here that rehearses inside, outside, split them up into groups. Obviously, they'd be social distanced, but we can monitor those groups, and we can give them guidance, and they can grow that way. And so, maybe one of the visions that we have in the music world is to, you know, we'll take it slow, we'll take it in groups, we'll put it together, and the next thing you know, we have a big performance, performance at the end of the fall, whether it be a standstill or virtual, depending on if we stay with Plan B or go with Plan C. The good news also is, since right out the gate, we went into a virtual mode, we adapted, we learned some things. Just as you ask input from the teachers, we as arts people like to ask input of our students. And so, I've been in some conversation about what, you know, what can we do to still make it fun for you, or what's the motivation factor? And the creative ideas that some of these students come with is, is amazing to me as well. Potentially, if we go online again, I can supplement, there are some great music programs nowadays, Smart Music, which you can actually upload the music that you might perform normally here, to supplement if we go into a virtual setting. So, let's say I work on, you know, measures zero to 25, and that's what we did during the day, but everything shuts down, well, you still have measure zero to 25 in a virtual environment where the program can actually track you, and it can identify wrong notes. So, it can kind of be there as an aid to the teacher, so those, those kind of things can still happen in the performance world. And then whether or not you put it together visually, that's, that's something that can be looked at as well. So, there's always engagement going on. But the, the reality of smaller group setting is probably what we're looking at, fundamental skills, and so we can build from there, and really, probably get some good performances in individually or group work, and that could be broadcast, people can watch it, you can see smiles on people's faces because things are happening, and I know that'll happen. And then, we can look to the bigger picture. As far as the massedness of the, what you see at the halftime performances and all that, reality is that probably won't happen, just because we have to condense everything. But we can certainly, most, most certainly even do competitions within sections, one of the ideas that some of the students had, that they were pretty apt to do that, whether they meet Google meets or whatever, they get the instruction virtually, and then they take and go with it. So, they could potentially create their own drill and just have a good old time with it. And then it's still, they have the competitive factor, but amongst themselves, in which case they progress and they get better that way, and they're, they're self-motivated about it to continue on. So, if that's happening, then we don't lose progress, we're actually gaining, and we can even get individual, more individual focus, which will put us probably in a better state to come out the gate, real strong when all this blows by. And so, that's kind of what it looks at, looks like. And one or two of the safety factors, just so you have an idea of what we're looking at, like a setting like this would work fine, according to guidelines, but, you know, thinking from a trombone player's perspective, because I have a boy who plays a trombone, oh, what about the slide? Well, even those have been considered too, like the trombone, social distancing is six by nine, just because they have the, the slide. So, we'll look at all that, I'll get everything placed the way it's supposed to be, according to the guidelines. But even the, as, if you've played an instrument before, you know you have condensation, those things need to be emptied, so we've been looking at, you know, puppy pads or cloths that actually take everything, so nothing will be spread, even when, even when that has to happen with instruments to be played. And then also, one other thing about, let me get back to it real quick, oh, the mallet instruments, what you saw here, you know, percussion visualing, visualizing this, having everything set up straight across, everybody facing forward, and then carrying the old individual mallets, and then being able to just basically bring everything in on their own, nothing shared, except for the large instruments possibly, of course, we'll sanitize those. And depending on logistics of the school, and that's a, you know, discussion between the teacher and the administration after all this is, after all the meetings are, have taken place, to, to kind of figure out what's the best and safest environment for the individual teacher in the school, because this, every school, as you know, is unique and they're different, and we'll have to assess what the best environment is. But we're working on that, we, Ms. Gephardt talked about having a conversation this Wednesday about even fine-tuning even the, the guidelines that we've already had put in place. And one other thing, there's also, bell, bell covers are coming out as well. So, if you can picture a, kind of a mask on an instrument, that's another thing we're looking at as well. So, we're thinking about the safest possible way to make it happen, and we can make it happen, we're gonna do it. So, once again, thanks so much. I appreciate your support for the arts, thanks for letting me speak. You have an idea of how it's gonna work, at least from our perspective, and, you know, the creative minds, like Mr. Fall talked about, things can change, they can even probably get, we can probably even improve upon that, those ideas as well.
Chair, any questions?
Yeah.
I actually had a comment, and I just wanted to compliment you, because self-motivation is the key, and I think you asking the children how to do things and having their ideas is helping them work harder and want to do it more versus us telling them what to do. So, I thank you for that, I think that's a wonderful idea.
Sure, thank you. Yeah, they're very creative, just like, just as we are as teachers, it's, it works its way down to the students too, and if you listen to them, yeah, they, some things, I mean, a lot of things actually, yeah, we could do that. And if it's gonna make it fun and exciting for them, let's do it.
Mr. Hill?
Yes.
I know from already seeing some posts on Facebook that you're getting that Union Pines Band active again. Now that we're in, in Phase One with activities and athletics, what does that mean for starting up your, your band for fall?
Okay, well, I've actually had some extensive conversation with our athletic director to kind of see how it, how it'll play out, especially with football starting. And all the measures seem to be very, very doable. You know, I got a great booster board, a lot of our programs do, and they're more willing to help in whatever aspect they can. But that basically means I can rehearse in groups, group settings, you know, I can monitor them different groups at a time. But this will allow us, like I said, to focus right now on fundamentals, just to kind of get started. What it looks like for me is some sectional work, smaller groups right now, and if anything right now, before we start school, to at least get the group integrated so they can see a face, me, and I can try to make them feel as welcome as they can, just letting them know that I'm here, and that all teachers are here for them, to set that expectation out right out the gate, that we, we're gonna be here for you, and everything's gonna be okay. And, you know, I wanted to make sure that's clear, but I think if I see them face-to-face in that group setting like that, and that's one of the neat things about typically the summer, when it starts, by the time you get to this point, normally, you have, would have integrated all the freshmen into the group, and everybody would have felt like they could make a smooth transition into the school. And so, if I can provide even a little bit of that setting before we get back to school, I think that'd be very helpful, and that's my plan right now. So, a little bit of sectional work, some fundamental training, and also kind of a meet and greet, just to kind of give everybody associated with what the plan is looking ahead.
An additional question, and this is, I really shouldn't throw this at you, but I see how the, the plans you're making are going to work for band and for orchestra, but I don't see a chorus teacher here at this point. Can you address, or maybe Ms. Gephardt is going to address, how we're gonna deal with vocal?
Let's defer, let's defer to Ms. Gephardt on that one, Rob.
Yeah, okay, all right. Any other questions? Okay. Well, I appreciate you letting me talk.
We look forward to seeing it.
Great. How long was my time? Because usually, I was two minutes, that's probably 20, right?
You don't want to know.
So, for chorus, and Erin would have been here, but with a newborn, I did not want her to have to come out. But we had conversation in the, with the chorus teachers, and a lot of conversation was looking, is very similar to the band, the small sectional groups, make, going outside whenever possible, if they, if they can at all get out, but then that small sectional where they're working, and then again, that flipped classroom where students might be working on some sight reading of music while I'm working with a small group on specific things. So, they're thinking about lots of different things. I think the one word that I kept hearing from that group was an opportunity, they're gonna take this, and I heard it from Rob as well, they're gonna take this and make it into an opportunity where they can really get involved in kids singing and still being able to continue to sing, and that was very much what Erin, she left me with is, we're not gonna stop singing, even if we have to go outside and really spread out, we're gonna have those uniformed opportunities.
Thank you.
So, next, we have visual arts, and Michelle Parks is gonna talk to you about how visual arts might look as we begin the school year.
All right, so, I, like my colleagues, would like to thank you all for allowing me to come and speak and share some of the information that the arts department and the arts across Moore County have been discussing. We met last week, and we mainly had elementary teachers there, there were some K-8 teachers there, and then I was the only high school teacher, so we still have to meet again. But I want to share with you some of the things that we already talked about and are looking at. And the visual arts communicate through their artwork. So, what I've created here are some visuals, so if you will try to read it with me, then I'll share with you the things that we talked about. We did use a guiding document that was the Recommendations for Arts Education as North Carolina Schools Open, and this was provided by the North Carolina Arts Education Leadership Coalition. Fifty-three national arts and education organizations across the United States got together and came up with this document, and so we use that as sort of our driving force and things to go and to look at. And of course, all of the North Carolina Education Associations are involved in this document and also, you know, endorsed it. All right, so the first thing we're gonna look at was the safety protocols and procedures. And just like other classrooms, we have to follow whatever the school has set forth and the county sets forth. So, we will have, of course, the hand sanitation as you come in the room and as you leave the room. We will have the six feet apart with our desks and have them all faced in the same way. We discussed, oh, my picture didn't come up, of course, we will also have the mask, we wear in the mask. I did have a picture there of Jill Hartzell, who is an elementary art teacher, with her Frida Kahlo mask, but of course, we'll have the mask wearing. We did have some teachers that felt like it would be better for them to also wear the face shield, and we heard from Dr. Grimacy now that, you know, there was a question, would you have to wear the mask, and now we know that that is what you will have to do. So, we have some elementary teachers who felt like that would, they would feel safer if they had the mask, the face shield with the mask as well. Some of those teachers also said they were looking into getting lab coats so that they could take those off and did not, you know, before they went home. And then, some of them had talked to their principals about wearing scrubs as well. So, those are some things that they're looking at and talking with principals. We also know that the scheduling, not yet, sorry, we also know that the scheduling will be varied from school to school, they're being very, very creative in how they're going to accommodate all of the students. It could be, you know, that they have art one week, and they only, music the next week, and PE the next week, and then it rotates every other week. Now, that's not gonna look the same at middle school, and that, and that will not look the same at high school as, either. So, we know those are gonna be based on, based school to school. And then, we also will have some teachers that are gonna be on a cart, and so there's some discussions going on in how to make that work the best, and that also, that scheduling's gonna play a part into that, being on a cart as well. Okay? So, next, we go to supplies. Supplies are a big topic of conversation for us, as well as the safety, but we discussed having art kits. And in these art kits, we would have a sketchbook, drawing pencils, pencil sharpener, eraser, color pencils, scissors, watercolor set with a brush, glue, those were some of the basic items that we thought we could continue with our curriculum in the best way. And I just brought a sample here of a little pouch, I like the pouches, that possibly could be used for those art kits. And with that in mind, with sketchbooks, this is a mixed media paper, so it wouldn't pile with watercolor paint and so forth. So, it would allow us to do some of the, or use some of the media, the mixed media that you can't necessarily do on just regular construction paper or typing paper. And the supplies that are not in this kit that we would have to share, then we talked about having those on a rotation basis from class to class, or A-Day to B-Day, just depends on what your schedule ends up looking like, and of course, they would be disinfected. And then, storage of these, we talked about how are we gonna store these, and how are we gonna store artwork? So, we talked about putting those kits possibly in a basket. One of the teachers suggested that it, that basket would go back to the classroom with that class, and every time that class came to art, then that basket would be returned, so that it's not sitting in the room as other classes are coming in, and that, we thought that might be best. I'm looking at the possibility at Union Pines of using the lockers right outside the art room. I need to talk to Mr. McCormick about that, but that's just an idea that I have so that we can store the work in the lockers, and also they can store their kits in there, and that way, you know, they would not be out in the classroom. And we can continue to work on artworks day after day that way. We also discussed the mailing tubes would also be a great idea for works in progress, especially if they had to take them home, or just storing them in the room. especially if they had to take them home or just storing them in the room or taking them with them back to the class. Those, and we're hoping like there's some community businesses or so forth that might have some mailing tubes that, you know, off the end of the rolls of something that we could actually get to use that, that would be great. The artwork itself, we realized that, well, there were some elementary teachers that thought they may have to do one day or two day projects and not like stretch it out like we do sometimes to do the different parts. And then, of course, we decided that we are not going to probably be able to do anything that's really large, that we would be better off to stick to something smaller. Sketchbooks, as I said, this is a big idea because the thought here, and of course, this, this is a smaller one. I would definitely want to have a nine by 12. But actually, they could do, maybe the solution is that they do all of their art in a sketchbook and then that's carried with them like they would a notebook for another class or so forth. So, and I do visual journals and they're sketchbooks, so they end up being art pieces many, many times. And then we did decide that clay was probably not a good idea, at least not this first semester. So we're going to hold off on that and reassess that in the second semester. Creativity and flexibility, we always have lots of that, but we know we need, really need to have a lot in these times. And so we know that there's going to be changes in the projects that we have done in the past. We still will be able to meet our curriculum, but there will be changes in the projects. And because of those changes in the projects, then it changes our supply list as well. And of course, we'll continue to use our course fees. Donors choose, the Public Education Foundation, NARE, it's a great outlet. And Dollar Tree also has some really good deals to try to get the best bang for our buck, help make these art kits and that sort of thing. So being creative and flexible with that. We do realize that we need to probably go ahead and make orders as soon as possible with school right around the corner starting. And we also know that supplies are becoming limited. They're going out of stock because everybody in the country is going back to school. So those were some other things that we talked about. And then, okay, we go to the remote days. We did talk about remote days and what they would look like a little bit. Of course, K-5 would use Google Classroom. And they would do it like they did during quarantine where art, music, PE, and media were all in one place. And it might link them out to another page, but they, the parents and the students would know that's where they start. In 612, we would utilize Canvas, and I do have my AP Studio Art Canvas page up there on that screen. In elementary and probably middle school, there'll be short mini lessons. That's what the kids will do on those three days that they're remote. Maybe some drawing exercise, some critiques, some virtual field trips. And even talked about, you know, a asynchronous, a pre-recorded demo that might be given. And this work would be graded. We did talk a little bit about that and the importance of, yes, this is something that you should be doing. It's not optional during those remote days. For high school, and this is, all of this is very fluid. I know you all know that, and everything is changing. And we're getting new ideas, which is really, really great. In high school, I kind of see it as more of like a hybrid course, like you have in college, where you have the instruction face to face and you're, get the instruction, you get the, what you're supposed to do, the directions for what you're supposed to do while you are on the remote days. And also then when we come back, you also get feedback on that. So you work, you know, on your own, but also there would be some synchronous and asynchronous things in there. And right off, hot off the press, we had a meeting, the Union Pines Arts Department had a meeting this morning. We're looking at something which I think is called HiFlex. So, and I think someone asked about this, the virtual positions and so forth. It appears that, I think the first thing that was said was that it would just be core classes and not electives. Well, it looks like now we might be able to offer some electives, and I'm really, really excited about that. So it looks like that we may be either teaching two face to face classes and the third one being virtual, or we may do the HiFlex where it is a combination of both for all three of our periods. So we're in the works of that and discussion with Mr. McCormick and the sit team and the arts department. And so I'm really excited about that possibility as well. Okay, and then the last slide here is just sort of me advocating for all of the arts. The arts are essential. There is a document, the Arts Education is Essential document that's there. It does support the social and emotional well-being of students, so it does support SEL. I mean, it is how we get to know our students. It is an outlet for their stress, their self-expression. We saw this during quarantine. We saw kindness rocks, we saw chalk walk drawings. We saw people in New York out on their balconies playing music with the, you know, in their own apartments, but out on their own balconies playing music with one another. It is a coping mechanism. All of the arts are a coping mechanism and it's a place for them to process their worries and their fears and their healing. The second one is arts education nurtures the creation of a welcoming school environment where students can express themselves in a safe and positive way. Rob and Adam both spoke about this. It's a safe place for them to express their innermost vulnerabilities. I'm always really, really amazed at some of the students in my visual arts class who are very quiet and reserved in class, but then I go and I see a musical and when they are on stage, boy, do they shine. And I never knew they had that in them. So, you know, it is a place for them to do that. And then the final one, arts education is part of a well-rounded education for all students as understood and supported by federal and state policymakers. Again, Adam announced the celebration of the arts educational requirement for graduation. And so we're right in line with that. The next thing that I have there is enrichment versus expectation. And this was a topic that was talked a lot about with the elementary teachers because when we got out for quarantine, it was more of an enrichment, meaning there was really no expectation for the students to complete the work or maybe even engage in it. And that was just because of the times it got thrown upon us. We all know that. This will be different. This will be an expectation to do the work. It will be graded and it will be expected that you will complete the remote assignment. And, you know, after all, our standards are written with core curriculum in mind and they line up with that. So we are supporting that and integrating what is being taught in the regular classroom. And that's what really, really gives you a holistic educational outlook. And so that's what we want to continue to promote. So there'll have to be some collaboration with the teachers so that they can hopefully align some of these assignments with what is being taught in the regular classroom as well. And then the final thing is resources. We are continuing to meet. We are continuing to get resources from other counties, from DPI, from all of our arts education organizations, and just using each other as resources. And that's why I said I think things are very fluid and they change very, very quickly and ideas are just flowing. I mean, it's, it's like you really could see light bulbs go on everywhere if, if that was a thing that we had that projected from our heads. So anyway, I'll be happy to entertain any questions that you may have.
Are there questions about the arts, specifically visual arts, but performing arts as well? Anyone with, I wish I could draw. Makes me want to sign up for an art class.
You can join us.
Be back, back to the basics.
This may be covered later, but how will the arts look for those that are in the Virtual Academy? And maybe that's something that Ms. Vang will talk about later.
Let's defer to the Virtual Academy.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you very much.
So as you see, our arts are alive and well, and we have done so much work. They continue with their enthusiasm to make sure that our students have strong art opportunities. So I'm going to switch gears a little bit, and we're going to talk, you got to meet some of my fantastic reading camp teachers. And one of the things that we know from those reading camp teachers, the power of our teachers and what they have stepped up to this summer to get ready for 21, 2021 is amazing. This is just an example. I just had to put Leslie's work up here. We're not going to click on it because, but Leslie actually, I gave them the challenge as we were in PLS. I said, how about making some videos for your colleagues that show them some of the stuff with Google Classroom? Because we know this time, attendance is going to be taken based on our kids completing assignments. And then we're going to have a feedback cycle to make sure they're getting really good for those remote learning days. I was so excited though, I said, I said, you know, go out and make some videos to help your colleagues since we've got to do Google Classroom. So she made this one, and go ahead to the next slide. She said, well, there were folks in my session that were having trouble uploading assignments. She said, I got a video for you. She said, I made it for you, and she sent it out to all of her colleagues. So when I say our teachers are doing phenomenal work and are ready for this integrated approach to learning, I mean all of our teachers K-12. So I'm going to actually spotlight two of our wonderful individuals. I, I reached out this summer, my team decided, hey, we want to have Canvas courses built. And this wonderful math teacher from Northmore High School, Jessica, stepped up to the plate and Ms. McKittrick just dove right into, what does a Canvas course in math look like? And then Rachel Necromon will be up after that to talk about what does a middle school eighth grade Canvas course look like? So I'm going to turn it over to Jessica.
Good afternoon. As Ms. Gephardt said, my name is Jessica McKittrick. I teach math at Northmore High School. I was tasked with creating a Math II course on Canvas. This course will be sent out to all teachers in our county that will be teaching Math II. It will give them a starting point, a resource of sorts, as they begin to prepare for a semester of unknowns. Being unsure of what the semester holds, having a lot of resources in one place will be very beneficial. As a teacher, I will probably make individual changes to the course to adjust to my teaching style. And this course will allow for that adaptability for all of the teachers. The course is set up with a similar layout for each day. Learning targets and activator, which is a warm-up, a mini lesson, practice and application, and a formative assessment. With the same layout each day, students will know where to look for the material and assignments. This will be beneficial if we were to switch to Plan C or even Plan A. If we look at the course now, for the first day, the topic of discussion is adding and subtracting polynomials. The warm-up, you'll click on that, is a video that the students can watch on their own or in classroom, depending on if they are face to face or learning remotely. The next, the mini lesson consists of a video of examples, a text, and a textbook insert from CK-12. This is where a teacher could include a video of their classroom for the day. Students will have extra resources to refer back to if they need additional help as they go through. The next thing they will have is the practice and application. This is a worksheet that is embedded into the website. In my classroom, I will likely pass this paper out to my students. If they were to lose it for any reason, they will still have access to it, as will those that are learning remotely. On this page, there's also a place for students to submit their work and answer to eliminate, their work and answers to eliminate the touching of too many papers. Most students have become very comfortable with submitting work online after March. Last for the day is the formative assessment. Each formative assessment is a way for me to gauge how the students did that day. Each formative assessment looks a little bit different, but this one will just ask the simple question, what is something you struggled with today? It's open-ended and asks students to reflect back on their day, and it gives me a chance to change my day for the next day. Every day will be set up very similar to that. Is there any questions?
Questions? That's a lot of work already done.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you. And with that worksheet online, there's no more using the dog ate my paper as an excuse, is there, Jessica?
Good evening. Good evening, thank you for having me. Like Donna said, I created an eighth grade science Canvas course. This is my landing page. And like Jessica said, it's very tweakable. Like if the teachers not feel comfortable with this, they can set up their own. They can have just the modules as their homepage, but it gives them a place to start. So if you'll click on modules. And scroll down, there you go. So like Jessica said, there is a model that we're all following. So every day, the kids will see the same thing, but they won't just see the same thing in science. They'll see it in math, they'll see it in ELA, they'll see it in social studies. That way, parents and students always know where to find things. It makes it very navigable for them. There's not a struggle, there's not a disconnect between different classes. So just like Jessica, I have an activator or an entry into the lesson for the day, something to get them thinking, something to get them prepared for what we're going to be learning about. So if you'll click on that. And I had something a little bit different. Mine was a discussion, but that's the nice thing about these Canvas courses. They're very different, they're very dynamic. People can change them and modify them to make them fit their learning, their teaching style. So kids were looking at some pictures and telling why safety rules are important because we learn about science safety first. If you click next. And then I have a mini lesson. And here, I've created a video where I'm giving some guided practice, but a teacher, if they wanted their kids to see their face, I've given them a model and then they can create a video of their own using the same tools that I have. And then the children do it on their own. So they get that guided practice video and then they can try it on their own. And then if you'll scroll down and hit next. So then there's the assignment. So they're looking over the safety contract and it's been divided up into sections because there are a lot of safety rules. And so then they have different activities. This one is drawing pictures to represent the rules that they see so they'd get multiple modalities of learning. And then, just like Jessica, I have a formative assessment for the end of the day. And mine is just a little six-question quiz. So then, again, this is very helpful for teachers because they can see in real time how their kids are doing. Are they understanding what they were taught for the mini lesson and the assignment? And this shows you too that the virtual learning piece of our Plan B is very different than it was in the spring. There are much higher expectations, it's much more rigorous. And teachers are getting immediate feedback, students are getting immediate feedback as to what they're doing, how well they're doing, how do I need to adapt for the next day? But this course gives them a place to start for the first nine weeks. I'm happy to answer any questions.
I don't have a question, I have a comment. Have you used Canvas? Have you used Canvas? It's very difficult to put all this together, it takes a lot of time. So all of you that have done this, thank you so much. Number one, number two, and the other part is thank you for sharing with other teachers because by sharing with others, you can learn from them and they from you.
And I just wanted to clarify that this can happen both in the classroom on days when students are there on A-Days and then those that are at home are doing, can be doing the exact same lesson at the same time.
Yes, so this can be a setup so that kids that are doing it virtually, they have a very similar outlook to what is happening in the classroom. It can also be synchronous or asynchronous where they're working on this. I know personally in my science classroom, when I have those kids in the classroom in front of me, I want to do hands-on activities, labs, even if they are at their own table with their own supplies, being socially distant with six feet apart. So my lab activities are prepping them for some of the activities that they're doing. It's also enriching and extending some of the activities that they're doing virtually. So this course can be done either way. It can be done synchronously, in person and virtual. It can be done asynchronously for in-person and virtual.
Great, thank you.
You're welcome.
I'm, I'm impressed with the ingenuity that has been demonstrated in creating a lot of these tools. Just a clarification, if, if a student is viewing synchronously, can they interact with the teacher?
Yes. Yeah, so we have, Canvas actually has conferences, so they can see me, I can see them with video. And so then you can talk and interact. You can also do a chat box if children are not comfortable being on a camera.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome. Anything else?
It's most impressive, and we do appreciate those of you who are sharing, appreciate our IT department who I'm sure are working diligently and along with Mr. Johnson and his crew as well, to make sure that teachers are capable of doing this. And again, amazing how much work you've already done, even though you haven't reported back to work. to work.
Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Chair, Dr. Grimacy, members of the school board.
Mr. Eklund, if you just pause for just a minute. Chairman, Chairman Carter would like to take a five-minute break.
Sure, absolutely.
And just to stretch and use the restroom real quickly. So five minutes, we'll be back at, let's try to everybody be back by 10 till. We won't start right there, but we'll start as soon as possible as we can after 10 till.
And three through 12, we're going to get Technology Department, the hard work that in grades K through 12, those will be Chrome 5, Plan B students and remote learning will receive iPads, and second through fifth grade will all receive Chromebooks.
...until mid-September?
Yes, we're going to make sure, yeah. We're working with but we're still waiting for some devices to come in. We're going to have to refresh some devices. We want to make sure that all students have the availability of devices, and we've designed the learning to
could not be ordered until the money we were not aware we had the money, and then we ordered them almost immediately. And it's still going to be the middle of place those orders.
Yes, yeah, thanks to you and to the board for helping to
about what will happen in that first month of
We recommend We're also for any reason, they can't use any of the other support options to reach out to somebody. They can leave a message and have somebody from technology get back to them within 48 hours. For Internet access options, as you're aware, we've surveyed our community. We had a phone survey, we had a 33% response rate for those. The, just in some general numbers, from the families that responded, the 33% of families that responded to our survey of the entire district, approximately 6.6% that's reported that they had no Internet access available, and approximately 10.7% reported that the Internet access that they had available was too slow to support remote learning. Just calculating that out, that's an estimate of about 581 families with no Internet access and 941 have Internet that's too slow for remote learning. So as you're aware, we've already done a lot of work to get hotspots out to families in the district. We're going to continue to get additional hotspots. There is some money that's set aside from the state, but there's some details that we have to work out with finance in the state as exactly what parameters can be used to obtain those hotspots.
All right, so let's just review that. You've got about a 33% response rate, about one-third of our families responded. And of those, 1,112 either have no Internet connectivity or they have such limited Internet connectivity that they cannot engage in remote learning.
No, no, I don't want to misstate the numbers. That's the calculation based on using the percent responses and comparing that to the total population of the district. So it's like a statistical sampling of the district.
Okay, so if you translated that to the entire school district?
Yes.
All right, so that is a good number.
Yes.
1,112 is a reasonable estimate of the number of our families that either have no Internet connectivity or have such limited Internet connectivity that they cannot engage in remote learning online.
Right, right. And that 1,112 number is the number that we provided that subtracts the number of families that have already gotten a hotspot.
for their access to education. Is that correct?
Right, that's correct.
Okay, and go ahead and finish up.
Oh, yeah, so the additional things what we're doing to address that need is, as I've mentioned, getting additional hotspots. We have 100-plus that are already available in hand, and as I said, we're going to be ordering more. Again, we're dealing with the same issue of trying to find additional available devices because everybody in the world is trying to get their hands on these devices. As you're aware, we set up the Park and Learn sites at the critical support schools, and then with additional sites up in the northern end of the schools. We're going to be expanding that so that every single school in the district has a Park and Learn site so that somebody can drive up and get access to the Internet, the high-speed Internet that we have here available in the schools, including the new schools that are being built. We're also, if there are students that have no Internet access capability, or we're still working to get them Internet access capability, we're going to be getting them USB drives and setting up a data exchange process so that teachers can download lessons and videos on the USB drive and swap them out. Each student will have at least two so that they can continue to swap out, leave one at school to get the materials and have their one at home that they work with.
All right, just to clarify, Mr. Eklund, a hotspot, what value is a hotspot to somebody that has such limited Internet access that they can't receive remote learning? Does a hotspot help them if they don't have the Internet, the strength of the Internet coming into their home?
Well, sometimes it's a matter of major city. And my only Internet options are such be in a similar situation where they have to work from providing each student with a hotspot gives them the bandwidth capabilities to do the remote learning work that they need to do.
And one last question. How many more Chromebooks and iPads will be used by children at the beginning of this year than the end of last year? How many have we actually added?
We have just received an additional 3,800 as part of the refresh of Area 1 and 2. That's going to free up devices to be able to be redeployed to grades K through 5, or grades 2 through 5, I should say. And we also have an additional 620 iPads on order that should be coming by the beginning of September to be deployed by mid-September. So we're talking, you know, an additional 4,000-plus devices that we're going to have in the district.
All right, so that's a net gain of over 4,000 devices
Yes.
that need to be supported with IT support.
Yes.
And how many additional IT support personnel have we added?
Exactly zero.
And how many have we been requesting for the last five years in our budget?
At least three.
Thank you. Board members, any questions for Mr. Eklund?
I know that this past year, we didn't collect devices from students at the end of the year
Yes.
if they were returning. Do we anticipate having to replace, refurbish, I don't know, clean up the ones that kids have kept over the summer?
It's possible. Those devices are also under their four-year accidental damage protection, so we will be able to take some devices and swap them out and then go through the normal repair process. We're estimating higher numbers for what we're collecting and deploying to the schools to make sure that they have a pool of devices to be able to swap out with students.
And so the students who are in the Virtual Academy
Yes.
obviously are going to need the devices first.
Right, correct.
Since that's their only contact. Is there, maybe I missed it on here, word already going out to the Connect Academy students for pickup dates for these devices?
We're working with the schools on that. The tech department has been working very hard to get devices in. We just got the 3,800 devices in, and today, even with the inclement weather, they've been getting devices out to the schools to be prepared to let them pick up for the Virtual Academy. So it'll be the sixth and ninth grade students, in grades 6 through 12. The other grades in 6 through 12 that are still in the district, they'll have a device that they'll just keep as part of the Virtual Academy. And then we have iPads set aside for the lower grades, and also sets of Chromebooks set aside for the 2 through 5, based on the enrollment numbers we have. We've been able to set aside enough devices that they have available to, you know, bring this pool together. Because, you know, as Dr. Grimacy has said, we haven't gotten any of the additional funding that we've requested, so we're doing our best to make it work.
Well, and I know that we don't have specific numbers at this point, who might have moved away, transferred, opted to do some other kind of schooling, so the numbers are still somewhat indefinite.
Right.
Last question, and allow Ms. Gephardt
K-5 look like the first four weeks of school? We've got to make sure our K-5 teachers Google Classroom. So when those kids start, those them how to navigate in a Google Classroom. We found from the summer jumpstart program that kids are not digital natives like we think they are. So we navigate, use the navigation bar. So we really had four weeks, we want to immerse them in a true integrated approach. And click on this link. Here's what it should look like when it takes you there. So that four weeks So that four weeks is going to provide us a lot of digital integration time. And then what will happen on the Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday, or Wednesday, Thursday? Department is already working on ending it, so that we're not burdening our teachers. That was very really teaching this newness of Google Classroom to kids, getting them ready. Two days in the classroom. So we're very many time we have to move our kids are going to be ready. There and touch those kids and right now with those four weeks is to really digitally integrate and make sure our kids know this platform.
Thank you. That's very helpful to hear what that's going to look like, and I think it'll help very much those students get prepared.
And that will also help for the USB drives that Kent talked about, for those kids that we know aren't going to be able to, need to show them how to download, how to upload, how to rename a file. So it'll give us a lot of time to really make sure we're doing what's right for children.
Mrs. Gephardt?
Yes, ma'am.
Are we teaching typing to young children yet?
We're going to have to, because when our, we had a third grader this summer, I said, "Do you need to give me a capital M-C-S?" And he said, "I don't know how to do that." So that's that part of that conversation, we've got to talk to children and work with them on, "Here's how you put in your password. Here's where you put in your password." We did that, Dante helped me here, with our students for Jump Start Camp. And as I said, we took a lot of those lessons of, we've got to make sure we're teaching them these things so they can be successful. That's bottom line, we want our students successful.
I know, I've been dealing with the first great-granddaughter, and she can't type, much less spell, every word she needs. And that's definitely a consideration if you're going to be in a virtual situation.
It definitely is. So that's something that we're planning. But I hope that'll help us for the first four weeks. Thank you.
Madam Chair, you ready for Dr. Bowie? Dr. Bowie and Mr. Barath, if you'll update the board on our operational contributions to the presentation today.
Sure. Good afternoon, Madam Chair, Board Members. Dr. Grimace, I just want to update everyone on operations. We'll start with transportation. The department, they've worked in collaboration with PAR, Planning Accountability and Research, with CAFAL. Routes were developed, and as we speak, the plan this week is for a quality review that'll take place before the routes will be given to families. Staff continue working to make sure that routes are efficient as possible, given capacity restrictions currently in place. When boarding school bus transportation, attestations signed by the parent are being required in order not to delay routes any more than possible, and to not negatively impact families' safety. If the event happens where a child does not have an attestation, each bus will be provided with a touchless thermometer, and they will check the student's temperature, excuse me. This process, however, will take longer, and that, you know, several temperature checks would be substantially longer. But the bottom line is, we'll do whatever we can to get every child to school. And under no circumstances, no matter what the case, at the bus stop, we aren't going to leave a child alone at the bus stop. And Ms. Carter, your question earlier about the time and the hours, and talking to transportation staff and the director, we anticipate that with the multiple runs that'll be required due to the capacity, that at the end of the week, the hours of a bus driver will be similar to what they have had in the past, so it wouldn't necessarily negatively impact them. But we'll certainly keep a close watch on the hours and how that's falling.
So, Mr. Bowie, just to be clear, the parent completes the attestation form, they'll have a form, they need to complete it each day. If they complete it and the answer is, you know,
If it's no, 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 they have to present it to the driver every morning
There's no need to take temperature?
No, not if you have an attestation form. Thank you for bringing that up. I neglected that. If they do have the attestation form, there's three questions, they'll answer no to the three questions, they'll present the form to the bus driver, the bus driver will collect the form, the child will go to the back of the bus and be seated. It would happen like this for every child. When the bus arrived to the school, the bus driver, and this may vary a little operationally by school, but the bus driver would hand it to, say, the assistant principal, who's responsible for buses. And then the children that presented an attestation sheet, they will then be screened by the school upon arrival, just as if, the same way a car rider would be screened.
But bus drivers never check temperature? As long as they have the attestation form, they don't have to take
Correct, correct.
time to check temperature? And so your point was, parents, if you want the bus to run on time, have the attestation forms, because the more temperature checks that the bus driver has to engage in, the more it's going to slow down the route.
Right, yeah, I couldn't emphasize that enough. The attestation form will make things run so much more efficiently than if we're having to pause at times to check student temperature. So yes, absolutely.
We can't emphasize that enough with parents. Please fill out the attestation forms, and help that bus driver not have to take any more temperatures than he or she needs to. And how will bus drivers know about this?
Would you go back one slide, please, Lauren? Excuse me. The August 11th Drivers Meeting, all bus drivers are going to meet virtually. This will allow staff to provide drivers with information on the attestation collection, the temperatures, the thermometer, seat assignment, supplies that'll be provided, review of disinfection protocols and processes to follow, based on DHHS reference guides. So all that information will be shared with drivers on August 11th at the opening meeting. Any questions for transportation?
Dr. Bowie, I have a question. For our parents who may not have tuned in to our meetings, have not gone to our website, how will they know, or what communication will be done to let parents know that this is what the protocol will be on the first day of school? That you'll need to have the attestation?
Yes, good question, Ms. Thompson. What we'll do is, we'll mail the bus routes, and we'll mail parent attestations to the families. So, in that initial mailing, it'll let them know the time, AM and PM, or both, that their child will be picked up, the bus number, the driver, if possible, the attestation process. So all that'll go to families at home. And also, I neglected to mention, as well, the Transportation Department, they worked to take ridership from last year, and compare it to those that have registered this year, and get that information out to schools. Just so, the hope there is that a principal or school administrator or staff member would have a good familiarity of students that attended their school when they was a principal. You know, I would kind of know year to year who was riding the bus, and allow them to kind of put eyes on this list of kids who, for some reason, may have misregistered. It's just another way, hopefully, we can identify some kids that may not have gotten the message.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Dr. Bowie, back to the attestation form. Correct me if I'm wrong, but if a child can't answer those three questions in suitable format, which would be what, no, no, no? Because the questions ask if a child's been around someone with positive signs, what are...
Right.
They shouldn't be standing at our bus stop, anyway.
Right, right, yeah. I mean, the intent is for the parent to fill out the form, and our desire would be for the parent to accompany the child to the bus stop. But if, yeah, if it's no, 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 then they would be allowed to ride the bus. But our hope would be that a parent would be there with them. Am I answering your question? Is that what your question?
Well, I understand the point of the form. I think it's a bit of a hassle for both our bus drivers and for the parents. But, I mean, if a parent, if they want their child to get on the bus, they're just going to answer the questions the way we want them answered, to get on the bus. So what are we actually doing with that form?
The attestation form will be turned into the school when the bus arrives. At the school, the driver will give it to the assistant principal or the principal. And then the child will be screened. And Dr. Powers, you can kind of step in here if I miss this, but upon screening, if the child tests positive, I would assume there would be some communication with the family and the attestation form being incorrectly completed.
No, they don't test positive. The screening is to check their temperature.
Their temperature, I'm sorry.
So if their temperature is elevated, if I could step in, Madam Chair, the state's intent with this very cumbersome process was to compel parents to have the discipline every day of looking at that chart. And obviously, if the answer is yes to any one of those, don't send the child to the bus stop.
Correct.
Call the school, let us know. And so, the document is intended to engender that. Now, right now, the state's mandated process, and it is mandated, so whatever we think of it, we still have to do it, it is intended to be the first line of defense, but also the first place that the Health Department will go to do contact tracing. So, a parent that may, you know, I've seen in social media some parents saying, "Here's ways you can beat the system and send your sick child to school." Well, I believe the vast majority of our parents don't think that way, okay? They don't go there, and I'm going to have confidence in that. But should anyone do that, and the Health Department find out that you lied on the attestation form, or you did something to give your child something to modify that, then the Health Department is likely to find out about that. And I wouldn't want to be the first one to figure out what kind of a pickle I've gotten myself into. It's not worth it, okay? So, the idea is to instill that discipline for all of the 99.9% of the parents that would never do that. This is an assurance to them that we've got a step in the process that makes everybody get up in the morning, stop and think about whether or not they've been exposed, or they have any symptoms. And to manage that in a constructive way. So even though all the attention's been on all this paper shuffle, I want to encourage everybody to get beneath that and think, what's the reason for it? The reason for it is to help us keep children and employees safe, all right? And work with us, if the answer is yes to any of those questions, pick up the phone, you know, keep your child home, pick up the phone, call the school, and let's get to work on what to do about your child that may have been exposed, or may have those symptoms. So for now, the paper is in, it's what we do. I believe that it's a good process, until we come up with something different, it's what we have, and it's what we're going to do.
Well, obviously, if it's a state mandated thing, we don't have much
Yeah, but I wanted to get at the reasons behind it.
And I do understand, I guess as a parent who did not send their children to school when they were sick, it's hard for me to wrap my head around the fact that people would push a child out the door knowingly, knowing that they are, have been exposed, or are possibly sick with anything, whether it's strep throat, or the virus.
And I would just offer, I just offer that the possibility of that is so rare. When I look at all the chatter about it in social media compared to how rare the possibility would be, I just think we're spending an inordinate amount of time on that. I think right now, it'd be helpful if all of us would just get behind a constructive, positive approach to keeping our children safe and healthy, and building everyone's confidence to get kids back in school, and do so carefully. As opposed to some states where there's a large school district with 260 employees that have been diagnosed with COVID-19, and their governor still has them going to school with open schools and everybody going. That's not smart. We're taking a very smart approach, it's very thoughtful, and these documents support that safety and security line of defense.
Well, by all means, like I said, my question was answered, and I would hope that parents would take it very seriously
Yeah.
as they get up each morning and prepare to leave the house. And as a state mandated idea, we don't have much choice with that.
That's right.
Dr. Bowie?
Yes?
Dr. Bowie, just a point of clarification. If the bus driver has to take a temperature, he also has to ask the questions. Is that correct?
That's correct.
All the more reason why we need to have the form filled out.
Yes.
Good point, Mr. Weaver, thank you.
Thank you.
Shall we continue, Madam Chair?
Please.
Sanitation and cleaning. Mr. Bowie, Dr. Bowie?
Okay, thank you. Just, beginning PPE and disinfection supplies have been delivered to schools. Just want to add as well that it's been shared with principals for replenishment of supplies, supply replenishment that is not urgent, they can use the school dude maintenance program. It's a program that's been in place. Principals are familiar with this, and principals know that this would be in the case of if you needed paper towels next week, or if you needed, you know, something several days down the road. Also shared, if they need something urgently, to call, to email, just to let us know right away, almost like they would do if there was an air-conditioned unit out during the summertime. I mean, that's something urgent, and they need to get us quickly, and we'll get things right out to them. We're working hand-in-hand with our vendor, Seven Oaks, in maintaining adequate stocks of supplies. They've been really good about getting us what we need and getting us to it in a timely manner. Schools will follow the NCDHHS Environmental Health Section guidance for disinfecting and cleaning. Custodians were trained in March on appropriate disinfection procedures, but as we all know, where we are now is an entirely different ballgame than where we were in March. On Wednesday, lead custodians from every site, they'll receive the most updated information and detailed training. That'll take place Wednesday morning. They'll return to their schools and share their training with like 10 and 11-month custodians that are returning to work, and they'll all be ready to go when teachers return, I mean, when teachers return, yeah, when teachers return, and then students shortly thereafter. And they'll continue with sanitation and cleaning. Next slide, I call this my show-and-tell slide. Just mentioned a second ago, earlier, supplies were delivered to schools. Just want to make sure everybody understands that each classroom teacher, they'll have the supplies that they will need when they come back to class, and they'll be replenished as needed. And I've got a little box here, just kind of show you some of the things that teachers will have. This is a dispenser, it'll be filled with hand sanitizer, they'll be installed in every classroom. A lot of the classrooms have these already, but the ones that don't, they'll be installed. So, hand sanitizer station, just the roll-out paper towels. Each classroom teacher will start with like five rolls of these, and they can be replenished. And we've got a lot more of these on the way. Rubber gloves for the classroom teacher, face masks, smaller face masks, facial tissues, a spray bottle that'll be filled with disinfectant. The custodians were trained on this, but they'll be refreshed on it Wednesday. It'll go in the spray bottle, they'll use that to disinfect the areas, and then the hand sanitizer. So these are all materials that every classroom teacher will have, and then we'll be ready to replenish these materials quickly as needed. So, we're excited about that, and I just know, just as someone that has a lot of teacher friends who would be really angry at me if I didn't help out with this, we're going to really, really stay on top of this, and we just want everybody to know that teachers are going to get what they need to keep the staff and students in the classroom disinfected and safe, so.
Dr. Bowie?
Yes, ma'am.
Are bus drivers getting a box as well?
Absolutely. Bus drivers won't get exactly all of that, but they're, bus drivers will have tissue box, hand sanitizer, and mask on the bus. Yeah, and then the disinfectant in the bottle will be on the bus as well, and the custodians at the school, they'll replenish that as needed as well.
And then will buses be sanitized on a regular basis?
Yes, Madam Chair, on a regular basis, after every run at the end of each day.
That is regular, thank you.
Yes.
Any other questions for Dr. Bowie? School facility protocols?
Okay, and then, as mentioned earlier, a lot of these things Dr. Powers covered earlier, when we're talking about requirements for entering the building, staff and others must have face coverings. Each school would have established checkpoints. So, the signs posted throughout the building, the signage has been a really important piece, and we've gotten, I brought a couple of signs.
As you're grabbing those, Dr. Bowie, I think board members were impressed by the signage that Mr. Poole and Ms. Andres and Ms. Coe and the staff here have posted. They've done a very good job on that.
Good, yeah, Mr. Poole's been very out front of us, and these are just samples of signs that we got, and they're provided to every school. They went out today, just a large variety, just know your W's, one-way traffic, no entry without a face mask. And I won't read every one, I'm going to tell you, but there's a wide variety of signage that are going out to schools, and then on date, I'll let principals know if they need additional signage, or if they need different messaging for their particular site, just to let me know. Questions on the signage, or the protocol?
Dr. Powers hit this pretty hard earlier. Does anybody have any other questions? Okay. Child nutrition?
Child nutrition, okay. Although, all meals will be prepackaged, distribution will look different at different schools, different sites, each having different operational needs. I've asked Mr. Poole of Aberdeen Elementary and Mrs. Phillips of Pinecrest to really come up and briefly just describe kind of what it's going to look like at their individual school site when it comes to feeding children.
And as they come forward, board members, last couple of weeks ago, Mr. Bowie updated you on the generalities of child nutrition, but our you on the generalities of child nutrition, but are, we agreed that the principal's perspective at this point would be most, more enlightening. Ms. Phillips?
At Pinecrest High School, we're going to have the bag breakfast at our entry control points, which will be, as I mentioned previously, at the Ari Lee Auditorium and in the Fox Gym. And then at lunch, for lunch, what we're going to do is we're going to have a document that students complete in first period, or at Sand Hills or at home if they have a free first period, and they will input their name, their lunch choice for that day, and their third-period teacher. Then we'll get with Ms. Laster in the cafeteria, it will immediately export to a spreadsheet, and we'll sort that by third-period teacher and start delivering that to classrooms halfway through second period.
Will they be all cold meals, or will they be hot meals as well?
A little closer to the mic, Ms. Coe.
Will they be cold meals or hot meals as well?
Prepackaged.
Prepackaged meals.
Prepack, prepackaged cold.
Cold.
Cold, okay.
Here at Aberdeen Elementary School, we will have breakfast served from kiosk at the beginning of each of the grade-level hallways. So as students come off of the bus, or they get out of the car rider line and go down towards their classrooms, they'll be able to stop and pick up their breakfast from those kiosks at the beginning of the hallways. During lunchtime, the staff from the cafeteria will deliver those lunches to each classroom. We have a Google form that we use so that the teachers can put in their lunch count. The staff at the cafeteria will be able to tell how many lunches they need to prepare, and then they will deliver those lunches to the teachers. Our custodians will have large trash bins in the hallways and large trash bags so that that food doesn't have to sit in, and the waste doesn't have to sit in classrooms. We'll get that out into the hallways and be collected at the end of each lunch so that that is removed from the environment.
Questions for Mr. Poole?
Will students have the opportunity to eat outside?
Yes, we actually have several areas around campus. Our staff was talking about that this morning, that if they want to take their students outside, not just for lunch, but even for instructional time, if they want to just have a moment outside for something, they could do that.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Poole. And Mr. Bowie, is there any final statement on your part about child nutrition?
Yeah, I mean, I just want to add, you know, I've really got a lot of confidence in child nutrition staff. Prepackaged meals are going to be so familiar to them, since they've really been doing it since the shutdown took place. And, you know, they actually started, if you remember, way back when, they were distributing, they were packing prepackaged meals, and they were all distributed from Southern Middle. So we've got all these dedicated, wonderful child nutrition workers at Southern Middle making sure meals go everywhere. So, you know, now with them, they're on their home turf, and, you know, with child nutrition, you know, they're such dedicated employees, and, you know, there may be bugs here and there, but they'll be on it, and we're all determined to make it work in every area to best benefit our students, so, thank you.
And one of the things we wanted to convey with our principals today is that there will be some variation on how we attack this and other problems from school to school, and that's okay. The district provides the framework, and our principals and teachers and support staff take it from there, and whatever needs to be worked out after the first couple of days will get worked out, and we're looking forward to having that opportunity to give it a try. Thank you, Dr. Bowie.
Absolutely. Thank you.
And I'm sorry, I had one more question. Do we know yet about if we're going to be able to provide food on the off days to those that are at home on Plan B?
Good question. We don't know yet. We haven't got a confirmed definite answer from the state, but Ms. Lovelady is making contact every day trying to get that sped up so we can have an answer.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Dr. Metcalf?
Good to meet you, Ms. Vang, but I'm going to put the stool out for her, sir.
What'd you say?
I'm putting the stool out for Ms. Vang.
Okay.
Thank you, Dr. Metcalf. Good evening, Madam Chair, members of the board, and Dr. Gramacy. My name is Ms. Dawn Vang, and I am the Assistant Principal of McDietz Creek Elementary School, and I'm also a member of the Connect Virtual Academy Fire Team. Thank you for having me today. I am excited to share some updates from the Connect Virtual Academy. As you know, the main purpose of the Virtual Academy was to have an option for families who do not want to send their child back to school face-to-face. We also hope to continue this option for our Moore County Schools families after this school year. Our main information site is the www.ncms.org/Connect. As we finalize our plans this week, we will be updating this website. The enrollment process closed last Tuesday, July 28th, at 5:00 p.m. A final school messenger phone call was made that previous night informing parents of the 5:00 p.m. deadline. Unfortunately, we had to enforce a strict deadline because our team needed to work on staffing needs. As of today, our numbers are, for our final enrollment, 3,000, we need to correct that slide, but it's 3,616. Our PAR department is finalizing these numbers as they're having to check behind all of the students and make sure that they are in fact Moore County Schools students. In kindergarten through second grade, our numbers are 733, and third through fifth grade, 828, and sixth through eighth grade, 912, and ninth through 12th grade, 1,137 students. These students have committed to the fall semester. Prior to the end of the first semester, parents will be given the option of returning face-to-face. Students may not switch back and forth between Plan B and the Connect Virtual Academy, and the reasoning behind this is because of the staffing requirements and the teacher consistency and relationships. All students will receive devices like Kent said earlier. For kindergarten through first grade, they will receive iPads, and for second through 12th grade, Chromebooks. Students without Wi-Fi will be provided hotspots. Families unable to utilize hotspots will be provided materials through a USB drive and through a contactless drive-through. So after we received our final numbers from the Virtual Academy, this is where the real work began. Our team began to analyze the staffing needs. So based on the survey that was given to the staff a month ago by Dr. Appenfield's office, principals followed up with each individual staff members that previously said they did not feel comfortable returning face-to-face. So with that, the principals confirmed these numbers with their staff. Like Dr. Appenfield said, there was a significant lower number of staff that did not feel comfortable returning compared to the number of students enrolled in the Virtual Academy. This is the better problem to have. So because of that, we had to assign teachers virtually to teach. That is being done at the school level. We wanted principals to be able to reach out to their staff, who they have constant communication with, to make sure that all students were taken care of in their building. After we looked at the staff that were not comfortable returning to school, we analyzed the final numbers of enrollment and put schools into pods to help principals figure out staffing needs. For example, we placed Cameron and Carthage Elementary together to help combine virtual classrooms if needed. The team and principals are trying their best to keep students at their domicile school and trying to not cross-enroll students as much as possible. Principals are getting very creative in this process with accommodating all of their Virtual Academy students and their AV students. They're creating combo classes. Some teachers will teach face-to-face, and some teachers will teach virtually. Now, what that will look like, as some teachers have said earlier today, that will look like, for example, block one might be face-to-face, block two might be virtual students, and block three might be face-to-face. So kudos to our teachers for going above and beyond for all of our students. One amazing thing that we are excited to share is that the northern end of the county will now have access to numerous AP courses that they did not previously have access to. This provides our students with equitable access, and we're very excited for that. Principals are working together to finalize their staffing and their student placements. We've said this over and over tonight, but huge shout-out to our amazing principals. They are the ones working on this right now as we speak. The Connect Virtual Academy could not have thrived without their help and their support through all of this. I wanted to go over the daily structure and time again, as we have received numerous questions about the daily structure of the Virtual Academy. The daily structure of the Virtual Academy mirrors the integrated learning plan. We wanted to provide our students with some flexibility. There will be live lessons, and then there will be recorded lessons. This is, this, we created this to allow students to work at their own pace. They will work on their device through our learning platforms. In kindergarten through fifth grade, they will use Google Classrooms, and through sixth through 12th grade, they will use Canvas. Examples of these platforms were given a few minutes ago by our amazing teachers here today. The courses that they've created will also be used by our Virtual Academy teachers. We want the content to remain the same because if the students decide to return after the first semester, the content will be the same, and then learning will just continue on. Students will learn the, will learn new content following the same power standards and pacing as their face-to-face or Plan B counterparts. Attendance will be based on completion of daily tasks. Teachers will be given ongoing professional development on best practices for virtual learning. This is all supported by our DISF staff, who came back today, and they are working very hard and making sure that they provide professional development, not only for our Virtual Academy teachers, but for all of our teachers from Moore County Schools. Mr. Johnson said this last time, but relationships are still number one. That is our primary focus. Teachers will, teachers will work to develop personal connections with students, as well as build strong relationships with their classes. Social emotional support is more critical than ever. I wanted to go over a few of our FAQs. Right now, the principals are tasked with making sure that their staffing and student requirements are complete. Their main focus is all of the core content for grades K through 8, and all of the required courses for high schoolers to graduate. Now, beyond these courses, we will make every effort to incorporate electives in 612 based on, principals are working hard at that right now. Dr. or Ms. Helena Wallen, you said, asked if, where we are in that situation, principals are working on that right now. I cannot say thank you enough to all of our principals, but we want to make sure that we remain equitable in all of this throughout the whole district. So if we provide visual arts at Northmore, then we also provide that at the other high schools as well. So principals are working together to make sure that we have those opportunities for all of our students. Virtual students will be able to participate in athletics and extracurricular activities at their domicile home school. And let's say the governor decides to move us to Plan C tomorrow, the Connect Virtual Academy and teachers and class assignments will still remain intact. So our next steps as a Virtual Academy Fire Team is to create sample schedules. We will, the DISF right now are creating teacher and student expectation handbooks, and that will, that will include sample schedules, and we are also finalizing the device pickup schedule as well. We will have a virtual open house for all of our Connect students, and we are creating and giving professional development to all of our Virtual Academy teachers, along with all of the teachers in Moore County Schools, because they too are teaching remotely. We are thrilled to have this option for our Moore County Schools families. Are there any questions about the Virtual Academy?
I have a few questions. Earlier, I asked if all teachers requesting consideration for the Connect Virtual Academy, have they been accommodated?
Absolutely. That was the very first thing we did when we looked at our staffing needs. We looked at the staff that did not feel comfortable returning to school, and then that's what their principals started with. They started with those particular staff members and then worked their way backwards.
And that question specifically was on the survey, that they didn't feel comfortable coming back to the classroom?
Yes, that's correct.
She wouldn't know that. The answer is yes. Yeah. The answer is yes. At our last meeting, we said that we plan, as a school system, to continue to offer the Connect Virtual Academy. So those teachers that are enrolled in the academy now, I would assume would continue in that role. Is that correct?
I referred to Steve on this, but ultimately, we want this to be a standalone school for Moore County Schools. Teachers will apply for this school, and hopefully, they will have its own school and its entity where teachers can apply and hopefully teach our Moore County Schools students.
It's a bit of a policy question too, Dawn. You did a good job of giving a partial answer, Steve. You want to add anything to that? That's a long-term policy question that these, that are a little bit, bump these folks' pay grade a little bit.
I'm trying to avoid the step here. Yeah, she did a great job with that, and the answer to that is, it's going to depend on where we stand at the semester break. What are the needs? What are the academy options? Where do we see as far as the virus, and where parents are feeling comfortable? So the parents will have another process where they recommit to the Connect Academy. Those student numbers will drive our decisions on staffing for the second semester.
Those teacher, if the academy enrollment goes down, and we don't need as many teachers, will those teachers be assigned back into the classroom?
Yes, and that's one of the benefits of using our school staff and having our principals drive this, is that means that they're already embedded in their schools, in their teams, and then they can go back into those same teams in the second semester.
Okay, one last question.
Sure.
Would a new student be afforded the same choice to enter school under Plan B or sign up for the Connect Virtual Academy, no matter when they applied to attend Moore County Schools?
Speaking of newly enrolled students, yes.
Yeah, anyone, you know, if somebody came from a charter school, or if somebody came from outside the county?
Absolutely. People moving into the county will have the option of going Plan B or signing up for Connect.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
I had another, no, I just had another question about the staff. So if staff have changed their mind, let's say, and some would like to opt in to the Virtual Academy now, is there a process in place for that?
You mean if they've been selected for the Virtual Academy by their principals and would then want to return?
No, it's the other way around. If there are any others that have since thought they might like to teach in the Virtual Academy, as Dawn indicated earlier, we still have some vacancies, do we not? In other words, the number of students perhaps exceeded the number of teachers we had?
That is the work that the principals are doing, school by school in their pods, and so they're looking at their gaps in their school and in their pod, and then they are assigning and talking to their teachers to get them to do their virtual within their pod.
But I did interpret that correctly. What we ended up with was more students than we had teachers. We made that statement.
Yes.
And so what we intended to get, communicate with that was, yes, we're looking, we're actually going out and recruiting some of the teachers that had not previously indicated they wanted to teach in the Virtual Academy. We're actually recruiting some now.
So if a teacher is not interested in going back into the classroom right now, they could contact their principal to see what options are available.
They have that option, because there may be another pod where there isn't a teacher that wants to do that, and a teacher that wants to switch over to another school would want to make that known now.
Sooner the better.
And Dawn described it very perfectly when she said, this was the better problem to have, more students than teachers, because it allows you to recruit and pull in and fill the gaps a lot easier at the school level.
And Steve, mine was actually the, what you were talking about, if a teacher is virtual, do they stay virtual for the entire year, or do they have the option at the end of the semester to say, hey, I want to go back in the classroom?
So that is exactly what we'll look at at the end of the first semester, when we look at numbers of students and who needs to, who needs to stay in the Connect Academy.
Gotcha.
And then at that point, we'll talk to teachers, and ideally, when we, when we put this as a standalone school, we're going to be receiving applications. So we're going to have teachers who enjoy teaching virtually, who have really felt a connection to it, and really love it, and then we'll match those with the students and the families that also want to do virtual learning, and that's how we'll move forward once things settle with COVID.
And the subject matter licenses and whatnot, so far, we've been able to line up based on grade-level licensures and subject-area licensures. We've been very fortunate in that regard, have we not?
Yep, and again, that is the essence of the pods, and so being able to have principals work together where they've got the teachers and they know their licensure, and they can match that with the students in their pods, that was really the main reason the pods were created.
Board members, I hope you can join me in appreciating the fact that we Board members, I hope you can join me in appreciating the fact that we are rare in that we've turned out to a situation where everything so far has been pretty much optional, that people can choose to do it. However, remember, we're here for the children. And if we must transfer somebody at some point, of course, we have the authority to do that. But we're very grateful to our teachers. The way this has all worked out, people's needs are being met. We've been able to choose to do that. But people need to let us know what their interests are. And sometimes it's good to run that up the, the normal chain of command instead of going to social media first and then, then coming back to us. It would be helpful if we can kind of keep everybody there because so far, it's all working out very nicely. Okay, any other questions on the Virtual Academy and we'll, we'll wrap this up. All right, this time, Dr. Metcalf or Ms., okay, we've got Ms. Phillips and Mr. Poole back. They've done very well. We're going to give them another chance here. Principal perspective.
All right. I was going to say good afternoon, but apparently it is good evening to the board members, Dr. Grimacy, our district leadership team and those who are listening in. I'm really grateful to host these important conversations at the state-of-the-art facility now known as the New Aberdeen Elementary School. So excited. I am convinced that success of any endeavor is made up of three key components. The right mindset, a willingness to work through discomfort, and a group of individuals who believe difficult doesn't mean impossible. There are strong groups of educators that are already assembling via Zoom, Google Meets, and some in person who have committed their lives to the education of our children. They are frontline workers and are putting everything on the line so that the needs of our students can be met. We are proud of the plans we have put in place and appreciate the flexibility to make the plan work for our collective vision of providing safe learning environments. Every sleepless night, every moment of deep sighs at the complexity of this problem, and every opportunity to innovate has strengthened our resolve to rise to the challenge of proving the naysayers wrong about the incredible things public schools can accomplish. Here at Aberdeen Elementary, we have two mantras. The first is, "We are powerful and we are strong." And the second is, "Tigers together." These represent the can-do, will-do attitude of our teachers and staff. The board has done a great job in considering a plan that provides parents the opportunity to select the option that supports what they believe is the, in the best interest of their families. We recognize that today, we get to be a part of the innovation of education in a beautiful new school facility that I am so proud to call the Aberdeen Elementary School. I held a virtual staff meeting this morning and not one of my staff members was ready to pack up their bags and find another career path. Instead, they were anxious to get back to learning together with our students, supporting our families, and living into the spirit of our mission to build relationships that engage, inspire, and empower students so that they will be confident to pursue and lead in any future they dream. Even in a COVID environment, we will not just survive, but we will thrive and are ready to take the challenge that lies ahead. So on behalf of my colleagues joining in the leadership of this work and this school community, I want to extend our thanks to your continued support and care for us as we invest in the noble cause of education. My resolve is strengthened to make every child, every day, the tiger way. Thank you.
I too had good afternoon. Good evening, Madam Chair, board members, and Dr. Grimacy. I stand before you as the proud principal of Pinecrest High School. I can tell you Patriot Nation is prepared to show the power of the green and gold. There are many evidences I could share to prove this, but the main one is in our theme for this year. I asked a group of student leaders to come up with a theme and they selected Patriots United. Our students recognize, although apart, they must be united during these unprecedented times. We recognize these are not ideal conditions, but we know that our students, parents, faculty, and staff will adjust and look at each change as positive as possible and remain united. So what are some positives in all these changes? First, our students will have a one-way traffic pattern. With such a large campus, this will give them extra exercise and lots of fresh air. Another change is having entry control points as to ask COVID questions and check temperatures. We will have to use a variety of staff and faculty. This will give our students and staff a chance to get to know more of our Patriot family. Also, students will report directly to first period, eat lunch in third period, and wait for dismissal in fourth period. So what's the positive? Extra time to work on assignments and review lessons with peers and teachers nearby. And here is my final positive, which is not a change. It is the constant. Hardworking and dedicated people. I want to close by giving a shout out to the hardworking teachers, counselors, coaches, custodians, support staff, and administrators, along with our district-level leaders and our maintenance staff, who will do what they always do and go above and beyond to take care of our students. I remain proud every day to work along some of the finest people I've ever had the privilege to work with. Madam Chair, board members, Dr. Grimacy, thank you for your time and for your hard work and dedication to Moore County Schools. I'm happy to answer any questions.
Any questions for our principals? Let's give it up for Ms. Phillips. Uh, Dr. Metcalf and Dr. Locklear, okay, yeah.
And to sum it all up, orientation will be a virtual tour and we have school tours by appointment. I must say, bragging once again as the proud principal of Pinecrest High, if you would like to go to our homepage and scroll to the bottom to the freshman class, you will see a drone video. Kind of gives you a little bit of whiplash, but you get to see a school tour of Pinecrest High School, including the fight zone. So that's how we're going to handle orientation at Pinecrest High School. Back to school night, our teachers will be creating videos. This is one of the things I am most excited about. So we are asking our teachers to create welcome back videos. They'll be posted on our homepage and they'll also post a Google Meet. And parents can go to our homepage, see a link, they can listen to a video, the elevator speech from each teacher. And then they can find a time to connect with our teachers through Google Meet and teachers will be able to answer any questions. We're going to leave those videos up all year long. That way, when a new student comes in or even, even that rising freshman parent that mid-year starts getting the jitters about Pinecrest High School, they can go click on that link and look at our teachers and see what they have to say about being a proud member of the Patriot family.
And at the elementary school level, we are doing a staggered entry for our kindergarten students. They will come in, half of the A-Day students on the one A-Day and half on the other and we'll do an assessment and we'll do again the same for those on the B-Day schedule. At the end of the week, we'll create rosters and we'll be able to publish out to parents, "This is your child's teacher," and they'll be able to meet with that teacher and interact with them. We will also do some online meetings for new families. They will be able to click on the link and schedule the time to meet with us. And then, we don't have a fancy drone footage yet, but I'm harvesting that idea because we do have drones here in our STEM lab. And so we will include some wonderful video tours. We actually have two great videos being constructed right now. One is a video of our official closing of the Aberdeen Schools. And so we have been interviewing alumni and, and folk from all throughout the Aberdeen communities. And together with some former students and some current staff, we'll put together a wonderful video that closes the doors to the old school and introduces this community to the new school. So we're really excited about that. And then our back-to-school night video will be sort of like a newscast where we're doing breaking news on each grade level hall. So it's going to be a lot of fun. Teachers will share some information about their classrooms. I'll be all over the school. I'll be breaking over to our assistant principal and even our intern over here who will be working with us. And we'll be highlighting things in the building. It's going to be a really fun video. And then parents will have the opportunity to schedule time with their child's teacher either at 5:30 or 6:00 PM for a quick Google Meet with their teacher. We're excited about this school year.
Any questions for Mr. Poole and Ms. Phillips on orientation and back-to-school nights? Mr. TJ Martin was going to join us tonight from Elise Middle School, but had family illness come up and wasn't able to join us. But that's the reason for the column that you have there on middle schools. If you have any questions, just let Dr. Metcalf know. Okay, and to wrap this up, Ms. Murphy.
Good evening. First of all, just to remind folks of our return-to-school website. This can be found on the home, off the homepage of, at ncmc.org if you want to click on that. Laura May, thanks. You'll see there's been some new imagery added that I will talk about here in a second. Just kind of showing what life is going to be like as kids come back to school. So this information gets updated regularly. And we've added FAQs to that. I believe that's up on the upper left right there. And those FAQs are also linked off the homepage, directly off the homepage. These were all questions that we've been getting at MCS Questions at our email portal there. We've had 400, I believe, if you go back to this slide presentation real quick, we had 443 emails since July 21st that we've responded to. So quite a bit of work has gone into that. Thanks to Cindy Parker for replying to all those emails. The next item that's in the works right now, it's not going live just yet. It will in the next few days, is a guide for parents to communicate with them what to expect when their kids come back on day one. We talk about the letter of attestation. We talk about the temperature checking, directional hallways, what all that's going to look like so they can help us help their kids prepare for what the new normal is going to be like in schools, including the wearing the face masks, all of those procedural things that'll be happening. So that'll be ready for parents in the next several days. We're going to continue with our communicate messaging. People have heard my voice a lot this summer. They're probably sick of it, but there's going to be more. Principals have put out some really great detailed messages as well from the schools. This is particularly important for parents who don't have internet access. I feel that this is probably one of the primary ways that we're able to reach them is through the phone system. So those will continue, obviously. And through social media, we'll still leverage our social media accounts to get the word out about new procedural things. And then the imagery and the videos, you'll see here, we shot this last Thursday here at Aberdeen. This is what the car line may look like. You should prepare. It's going to differ at every school. But we're probably going to have at most schools staff out there taking temperatures. All the kids are in the cars. This is what a classroom is going to look like with the kids spaced out in desks and wearing masks and all facing the same direction. So we've taken a lot of imagery around that to use in our materials and our parent guide and on social media. And then we've also made several videos around what that's going to look like. How are, what's the bus going to look like? What's going to, what's the hallway is going to look like, the dispensing? So it really is kind of a moment where we can sort of really introduce this visually, what all this means to our parents and our students and get them ready, emotionally ready for, for what's going to happen day one. Next slide, great. Also, quite a bit of work into the employee communication. We have an employee feedback portal that we've had up for a while now. We've had 143 responses from employees on what they want to see in terms of FAQs topics, including what the procedures are for suspected or confirmed case, how is sick leave going to be handled, what if you're quarantining, childcare? So we've developed some FAQs around that. Anita mentioned this earlier. And all of that is going to be found on the, a staff return-to-school page that's only accessible by staff. You have to be signed into your ncmc.org account and then you can access the items that Anita had talked about earlier in the meeting. So that will go live tomorrow and start serving as a portal for employees that's specific to how we're going to be returning to school and the procedures around that. And I think that's about it.
Questions for Ms. Murphy? Madam Chair, any, Dr. Locklear, any, any final remarks or any general questions for Dr. Locklear and Dr. Metcalf?
I have one for Dr. Locklear and I don't, and could be maybe for you, Dr. Bob, but the, the remote learning days that were built into the calendar, are they still going to be remote learning days in the calendar? Or are we just squashing them this semester?
Very good question, Ms. Colwell.
Very good question. We've, we have, Dr. Metcalf has already consulted with our school board attorneys. At this time, we have one day in October.
Yeah.
And another day in November, which is Election Day. If we were to still be in Plan B in October, that's a Wednesday, so that day would remain. And then we would, we would anticipate if we're still in Plan B or Plan, in, in November, that's Election Day, we would maintain that day for Election Day. We have more days in the second semester and we certainly will continue to monitor where we are. And we have to change our calendar. We'll bring that to you for approval.
Thank you.
Great question.
Anybody else?
I'd like to go back to where we were going to notify parents and students on their group assignment, either A group or B group. How is that going to be communicated and how are we going to be sure that the student and the parent receive that information?
That's going to be at a secondary level, we're going to communicate that through our power schools, parent-teacher portals. They'll get that information. At the elementary level, I believe, Mike, we talked about. Yeah, it'll be posted at the schools. We will use Communicate. They'll make sure that parents will have several different ways of being informed. Posted in the schools, there ain't nobody that can see it. If they, they'll be utilizing the parent portal feature for the secondary level and Communicate messages, K-12.
When we say the parent portal, what, how, how does that get through to parent? How, how does the parent portal work for parents?
Our secondary parents and some of our elementary parents have been using the power schools' parent portal. That's an online system where they can go in, they can see information about their child's grades, et cetera. And so that's going to be a system that our, that our schools will utilize for that.
And for those that don't have the internet access to get to the portal, it would be to communicate telephone messages.
That's correct.
And by those that don't even have that capacity, our principals and social workers know who they are and will get that message to them.
And we're going to be able to set up, Kate Fall and the department is going to be able to set up phone lists, if you will, for our A group and phone lists for our B group. And so they're going to be able to make those phone call messages to those groups to say, "You're in A group, you're in B group." So.
and say, you're in A group, you're in B group. So there's going to be several layers of communication that will work. And that will be in full speed ahead as soon as our principals have developed those, those groups. And they've been working through the weekend and today on that.
And when do we anticipate those messages being available for parents?
At the latest, it would be going on next week. But, but it's, we may have some of those depending on where schools are. We're getting up on, updated on that daily, and we want to do that somewhat systematically, so it's not spotty all over the district. So it could be happening this week.
Okay, so with children in school on the 17th, then when we say next week.
Early next week. That would be the latest.
By midweek, it'd be reasonable, unless there's a problem, and we'll be working on that. Is that satisfactory, Mr. Weaver?
That's fine. Thank you.
Anybody else?
I had one more. I just thought of it while you were just talking. What about supplies? Is that all online as well? Can parents look for supplies that they need to get their children before school starts?
Our individual schools will be communicating that. Information is going to be a bit different.
Yes.
You've got different schools that are doing different things with that based on this being a Plan B, different scenario. But our individual schools are working to communicate that out. Yes, ma'am.
Dr. Locklear, earlier we heard that the, the bus routes times would be mailed to families. Will there be any indication in that letter if they're A or B, or is it just going to be the, the time of their pickup?
Be my understanding, they would be indicating that. I'm looking to Dr. Bowie to confirm that. But yes, that mailing should say, you're, you're A, you're B, here's your pickup time.
So the mail, the mailing will say that for those that are taking the bus?
I want to confirm with Dr. Bowie. He is, he is confirming, yes.
When, when will that mailing be sent?
You want to send?
When we want to mail it?
When, when will the letter be sent out? Will it be before October?
Imagine that's going to be early next week, Mr. Barath.
Yes, it will. They are, as Dr. Bowie explained in his presentation, they're doing a quality assessment review of the routing solutions for A and B to make sure there's no errors. And then the letters will be sent out. We're anticipating that, that process to begin, the mailing of the letters, end of the week into early next week.
All right. So if it gets mailed early next week, sometimes the mail takes three or four days. So when, let's answer it this way. When can a parent expect to receive a letter in the mail stating which, you know, what their bus schedule is?
Next week.
Okay, by the end of next week? So by Friday of next week?
By the end of next week. And should they not, then they will, we will instruct them and working with the schools to contact the Transportation Department for those answers.
Okay, so the Transportation Department will be open on Friday. I'm trying to think ahead, because the first day of school is the 17th, and I want to make sure that in this public forum, we're, we know, so if a parent has not received the letter by Wednesday or Thursday of next week, should they call the Transportation Office?
We will have that communication set up to send to everybody, and we're at the schools on that list as well, to parents, just to notify them as part of our broadcast message. Then we will establish it either by Wednesday or Thursday next week, the date upon which and the number to call.
All right, because that, that would then give them Thursday and Friday to contact the Transportation Office to get the information if they've not received it in the mail.
That is correct.
Okay. Is that, is that what the question was? Did we answer the question?
But the hope is still understanding who's in the A group and who's in the B group by the end of this week or early next week, is what I'm understanding. So that information can still get out earlier through Power School, so families can plan, because that's part of the, the challenge, is being able to plan what day your child is assigned, either A, A group days or B group days.
As Dr. Locklear said, that'll be made clear by Wednesday.
Yeah.
And Mr. Barath says that by Thursday, everyone will know about the bus route related to that. So when they get their letter and when they get the information through the portal, there may, we don't know which one they'll get first, but they'll get that information in the middle of next week. And, and so if they don't know if they're in Group A or B after Wednesday, they call their school. And if they don't know, if they have not gotten their letter from Transportation, by Wednesday or Thursday, they should call the Transportation Department. Is that, is that clear? Gentlemen, is that accurate? Make sure, because this is your one chance to make sure that's clear, because we.
Yes, sir.
Okay. Any other questions? Madam Chair, an abbreviated review of Mr. Barath's presentation?
We'll, we'll let Mr. Barath have just a few moments at the lectern there.
Okay, let's, let's get on with it, because as you can see, it's going to get a little noisy. Mr. Barath, if you can give us the abbreviated version, please?
The very abbreviated version everyone would like to hear is that.
Closer to the mic, because it's getting loud.
I'm sorry. The abbreviated version everyone would probably like to hear is that the presentation is attached to the executive summary. I'm here to respond to any questions you may have. However, we will go through with due haste here and try to catch the next window of missing rain. So while you're bringing that up, next slide, please. So here we are at Aberdeen Elementary. As you took a tour through here the other day, you saw all the spaces in here. Next page, please. And the contractor has achieved the substantial completion of the school as of last week on the 29th. Again, that's late. They were 186 days late from the contracted date. So they are, we have been, as reported before, continuing to withhold any liquidated damages in agreement with the construction contract, and they have 30 days from the 29th to get to what's called final, which is finishing all the remaining small items on their punch list. And again, to date, we have not used any contingency or inflation funds remaining from the award of the project. Next slide, please. Southern Pines Elementary, next. Here's an aerial view of the site and development. You saw the, back one, please. You saw the road for South Carlisle's extension. It is connected all the way through except for up towards the east where there is still some stone riprap for stormwater management. They will make that their last patch through there. Next slide. The building, the brick is complete around the building, so that is a good thing. Not only is the roofing done, but the brick as well. The site, they have started putting their base in and curving around the drop-off lane and around the back portion of the bus drop-off loop. You can see here, you could also see the canopy along the building being installed at the drop-off area. And in the courtyard, they began getting the final grade cut and beginning to establish that for where the outdoor classroom and seating is. This is a view outside the gymnasium. We're again, ready to pour the concrete out there for the drive deliveries. And this is a view inside. When you come into the main building and get through the lobby, you can see here where the grade wing goes off to the right to the kindergarten and first grade, and you continue straight to the media center. They have the terrazzo down throughout the majority of the building at this point. Look down the hallway, you can see in the media center, they are getting the wall partitions up and installed along with the mechanical systems. Here's the gym. The backboards and goals are installed. The walls are painted, the cafeteria, the terrazzo's down, that's why you can't see it. It's all protected right now. And they have the ceiling grids up and the mechanical systems are connected. They began installing now the glass and glazing on the windows. So you can see the divided look pane that is being put into the window systems, and also in the classrooms, how the cabinetry cubbies are begun being installed with the terrazzo has been ground and finished. So they are remaining on schedule with all their critical path items. They are at 90% of the timeline and at 74% paid. The, the big discrepancy between the timeline completed and discrepancies is because their pay app had just came in after I had completed this. So that gap closed a little bit. And again, it has not utilized any contingency or inflation funds remaining. Northmore High School, you can see from this photo how the roofing is beginning to take better shape and form to complete. The water storage tank for the fire sprinkler system is, was in process when this photo was taken and has since been completed here. That's how quickly they worked on it. There was a video I was going to try to link, and I couldn't get it to work, that shows how the system is elevated and jacked up so they can install the tank features. Looking down the main hallway, you can see how they have the mechanical infrastructure, the cable tray, and they began their block filler at the top where the suspended ceiling will secure to the walls. Another look down the same hallway to give you a sense of the scale and length of that. In the main lobby, where you enter from the back of the building, the gym is off to the right there. They have, again, the similar situation of the systems in place and the primer to get ready for sealing. The gymnasium received their goals, that's basketball goals, and got those installed in there. And they're beginning to work on finishing the touches there to get ready to block fill that and get the mechanical system. This is a look at a typical classroom as they're getting the partitions finished between them and the cable for, structured cabling for all the data connections they've already begun running in there. The terrazzo also just began out there, so here's a shot in one of the upper lobby areas and down the hallway where they have just started installing it. They remain on schedule with this, meaning they're fast, just like the other school. This is about 90%, 89%. And again, just to keep in mind that not only were the steel erectors impacted for, with COVID, but we just also learned this past week that the science lab countertops are impacted by COVID. And anticipating a November installation date until they can receive those, the factories had to shut down due to elevated COVID cases. So we are continuing to assess and monitor that for when they reopen and they could get back into production and their capabilities to expedite that. Working with Principal Purvis, there's not a perceived problem with that, because they would not be moving into these labs until the Christmas break. So at this point, we don't see that impacting their ability to occupy and utilize. It just will extend one item, hopefully, just one item on the punch list. Pinehurst Elementary School, this is a ground-level shot looking at the building, the classrooms, the, on the low end, you can see how the second floor masonry is complete across the front of the building and the sides, and they started the framing of the roof at the top of the second level. This is where the future main entry will be, so you could get a feel for the scale of the place in that. Inside the classroom areas, the mechanical systems are being put in, and the infrastructure for electrical as well and plumbing. Looking at the administration area, more progress on the same. Happened to take this right after a heavy rain, so that's why there's water there. And when you look at the classrooms, again, they are continuing to frame out the partitions for the bathrooms, the storage rooms in between them, and getting the mechanical systems and electrical plumbing in place. Dark look down the hallway there at the systems that are already installed overhead. Upstairs at the second floor where they're doing the steel framing for the roof structure going in place there. And the mezzanine for the mechanical items that are going to be up above the second floor, getting all that poured across the corridors in that shot. And here's another look down at the classrooms on the second floor level. So more of the steel framing going on at the back. This is the side of the building on the back that will open up to the playfield area. So again, it's mimics sort of what's in the front with the scale and proportions. And in the gym, the trusses are in, they're wrapping up now the acoustical decking and finishing constructing the concrete walls such as here around the storage rooms in the office area. Again, that project did have that delay in the beginning with the asbestos abatement required for the existing buildings to come down, and increase the duration of construction through that to March 8th. Geothermal drilling is continuing. That is a critical path item around the project, and 54% of the timeline is passed and 41% paid. McDees Creek Elementary, as you're aware, had ongoing good work going on. To wrap up that for final completion, just received a request Friday last week from the contractor to go back and backcheck everything, which if everything goes accordingly, they could achieve final completion. But again, on that project, we continue to collect liquidated damages every day. So there's a quick presentation, and I'm available for any questions you may have.
No one has any questions. Thank you so much, Mr. Barath.
I just hope the board realized that with Pinehurst getting to 54%, we are now halfway through on our last project, which means that we're in the home stretch.
And I think we can verify today that this building is very sound and waterproof because of the rain that's been coming down as we've met today.
It was a good test.
It certainly is. All right, at this point, that does take us through, excuse me, through our items on the agenda. Leaves us with board comments. Dr. Brown, do you have comments?
No comments.
Ms. Caldwell?
No comments.
Mr. Dennison?
I do. I am very grateful and impressed by the efforts of our employees and preparing for their, for their safety and for the safety and health of our students during this time. I'm presented challenges. Thank you very much.
Ms. Thompson?
I would like to comment that first, it's been a great evening, afternoon, evening, being out to a board meeting versus our usual Zoom meeting. We couldn't have, Aberdeen is just a beautiful school. It's just a beautiful campus and school. Appreciate extra efforts by Principal Dante, Poole, and all involved with technology, communications, et cetera, to have this meeting set up for us this afternoon. Also, thanks once again to our administrators, principals, teachers, support staff, everyone, for your ongoing collaboration to provide a creative and optimistic plan for school reentry. With our Plan B, virtual option and Connect Virtual Academy, our parents have an opportunity to select an educational plan during this disastrous, devastating pandemic time that will meet the need of their child. Thanks to everyone involved. You continue to think outside the box, and it just amazes me. And also, just want to thank, once again, our principal at Pinkney. We had just an awesome graduation, July 18th, for our students at Pinkney. Those students, just kudos to them and heartfelt gratitude, how they just persevere to, to be able to get their diploma. So congratulations to our graduates up from Pinkney.
Thank you. Ms. Waller-Miller?
No additional comments.
Mr. Weaver?
I'd just like to acknowledge that this is the first official event at the new Aberdeen, Aberdeen Elementary School. What an excellent, safe learning environment this facility will provide the students who walk through its doors. Also, I hope everyone will exercise extreme caution and remain safe throughout the storm and afterwards while cleanup is being performed. There can be a lot of hidden dangers after a storm, such as low electrical lines, open manhole covers, hidden by high water, et cetera. Please protect yourself and your family.
Thank you. And I'll just add to that, a thank you to Dr. Grimacey, our senior staff, our principals, other administrators, our teachers, our custodians, our IT group, our teacher assistants, anybody that is employed by the Moore County Schools. You have way outdone our expectations. As a last reminder, though, to parents who have been listening so eagerly to this meeting today, to students who are tuning in to find out what's going to happen, and also to our staff, to please keep in mind that this situation is an ever-evolving event. We don't know from one day to the next what might be expected of us, asked of us, or demanded of our schools. And thus, you please bear with us as changes will continue to happen. Guidelines from Health and Human Services, from the CDC, from DPI change frequently. Directives from the governor's office can come at a moment's notice. So please note that we will adjust and readjust and perhaps readjust again and get that information to you as quickly as we possibly can and in the best method possible. So bear with us on this one. We're going to be opening our schools, and we're going to be providing a quality education to all those who are enrolled. Thank you for helping us make it happen. So with that, I think we are ready to venture out into the storm, perhaps. Is there a motion to adjourn?
Madam Chair, I move the meeting be adjourned.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion by Mr. Dennison, second by Ms. Thompson. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The motion carries 7-0. Meeting adjourned.